Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming. Welcome to the April 29, 2008 meeting of the Glendale City Council. For those of you filing in, see if you can take a seat. Very good. Okay. Let's get underway, shall we? And Mr. City Clerk, let's call the roll.
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. We have the next item, please.
Next item is the flag salute.
All right. And that is Councilmember Weaver, please.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation presented by Reverend Dr. Jose Figueroa of Forest Lawn Glendale.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the invitation. And the Bible says, "I try to add to God for help. I try to add to God for help me." Thank you, Jesus, for this day. Please bless all people at this meeting. God bless the city of Glendale. God bless the city mayor, the councilmen, the police, and fire department, all the people attending this meeting. Thank you, guys, for your direction and this meeting. God bless you, everyone.
Mr. City Clerk, can we hear the report, please?
The agenda for the April 29, 2008 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 24, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is presentation appointments, and that 3A is the agenda preview for the meeting of May 6, 2008.
Shall we go to Yasmin Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for May 6, we have a budget study session at 9:30 in the morning. In the afternoon, for the Housing Authority, we have no business items. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we do have a public hearing, Director of Development Services, regarding a variance for signage for Outback Steakhouse located at 146 South Brand Boulevard. We do have a joint public meeting of the City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, and this is status report of the 13-unit homeless family transitional housing program. For the Glendale City Council meeting, under consent items, Director of Public Works, approval of the final map tract for a two-unit condominium subdivision at 1237 and 1314 East Garfield Avenue. Director of Public Works proposed professional services agreement for miscellaneous engineering and financial services regarding wastewater issues. The City Clerk, legal advertising contract for the city of Glendale. Under action items, we have two items, Mr. Mayor, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services regarding design for Glendale's entry in the 2009 Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade, and the City Manager regarding a memorandum of understanding with the MTA. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Let me, just before we go to the next sections, which are proclamations, let me just remind everyone that this is our, we're setting sail on our new presentation program, this being the fourth Tuesday of the month. These will be our last proclamations for the month, last and only for the month of April, starting the fourth Tuesday in May. That will be the only day you'll be hearing proclamations and commendations at the City Council. So what you've heard up until tonight has been sort of playing catch-up with some of the things in the pipeline, and so in terms of this segment, we'll, after tonight, see you on the fourth Tuesday in May. Mr. City Clerk, let's move on to 3B.
3B is proclamation designated May 2008 as Glendale Blue Ribbon Police Appreciation Month.
I'd like to ask Councilmember Najarian to present that, and if I could ask John Gantis to please come forward.
Hello.
Yeah.
How about you? How are you?
I'm good.
You're no longer mayor?
No.
Look out, John. Behind you.
Okay. The Assistant Chief's gonna need it.
Mr. Mayor, your proclamation issued April 29, 2008, reads as follows. Whereas the Glendale Police Foundation was founded in February of 1968 by then-chairman of the Board of Glendale Federal Savings and Loan Association, Raymond D. Edwards, and whereas the Glendale Police Foundation's specific and primary purpose is to promote law and order in the city of Glendale, and whereas the Glendale Police Foundation's general purposes are to encourage every citizen to become active, involved, and responsible in fighting crime and disorder, promote active community support for law enforcement by sponsoring programs to demonstrate the effectiveness of law enforcement's activities, and the community's appreciation of the efforts of law enforcement, and whereas through the years the Glendale Police Foundation has supported numerous activities to assist in keeping Glendale's residents and businesses safe, most recently spearheading canine fundraising activities for the purchase and maintenance of a canine unit for the Glendale Police Department, and sponsoring the annual police appreciation luncheon. Now, therefore, John Drayman, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaims the month of May 2008 as Glendale Blue Ribbon Police Appreciation Month, and congratulate the Glendale Police Foundation for its exemplary efforts to help law enforcement maintain safety on our streets and in our homes and businesses throughout the year, making Glendale one of the safest cities in our nation.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's indeed a pleasure to be here this evening. I know I'm under a three-minute time limit, so I know to do it quickly. Just let me remind you and everybody that the luncheon this year, that we honor our police officers, the best of the best, as we say, is May 29 at the Glendale Hilton Hotel at 11:30 in the morning. We will then indeed be honoring the best of the best, as picked by a committee of the police officers. In addition to that, we continue to do, as was indicated in the proclamation, the fundraising necessary to maintain the canine unit and to provide new canines. As I know you all know this, canine, we have four canines, and indeed, they've been incredible in their work. We continue to hear about this. We supply approximately $20,000 to $30,000 a year to help maintain that, and that's money that doesn't come out of the city of Glendale budget, so that we have more money available for other programs. We have provided to date in excess of $100,000 for the acquisition and the maintenance of the canines, and we will continue to do so. We have now got a fundraising program, I don't know where Vicki is with t-shirts, but we now have t-shirts and hats that have the canines on them. Are you, here comes Vicki. Here they come, right here. She just, she had guests forgot it. If we could put this on the camera, you can see these great pictures of these t-shirts, picture of the dog, and it says Glendale Canine Unit, established 2005. And on the front is a little logo up here that says Glendale Canine. We have handcuffs, and below that it says Bad to the Bone. So, and these dogs, when they want to be bad to the bone, they're bad to the bone. Isn't that right, Chief DePampa? So with that, we thank you for this proclamation. We look forward to each of you being there on May 29 to support our police appreciation luncheon, and we will continue to raise funds for the canines and other programs to assist in the budget of the city of Glendale. Did you want to say something, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Gantis.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. City Clerk, I'm gonna jump out of sequence here for something kind of special, just to mix it up a little bit here. We're just gonna call the meeting at a close now and say goodnight to you all. Lock up when you're done. No. We're going to move to a very special motion, and I'm gonna call on my colleague, Mr. Najarian, to read that motion into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. I move that the selection by the City Manager of Harold Scoggins as the Fire Chief for the city of Glendale is hereby approved pursuant to Glendale Charter, Article 4, Section 4.
Second.
Thank you. Well, shall we make it official? Official?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before you do, can I make a couple of comments here?
Of course you can.
The action is before you this evening really concludes what has been a rather long and extensive recruitment and search for a new Fire Chief for the Glendale Fire Department. That search was national in scope and attracted a good number of individuals who I think, by all accounts, are tops in their field. As sometimes is the case, we find that we have very qualified people among us who, when tested against the field, end up, again, coming out on top. And such was the case for, frankly, two individuals in the Fire Department, Steve Howard and Harold Scoggins, in giving a great deal of consideration to the right person to lead the department for the next number of years. It was my conclusion that Harold has prepared himself in a way, and has frankly invested himself in the department and the community to the extent that he is the right leader to assume the leadership role in the Fire Department. First, a little bit of information about Harold. He has 23 years in the fire service, 18 years of that with the Glendale Fire Department. He has, by all accounts, proven to be a capable leader and has a well-rounded background, and one that not only impressed me, but impressed the rather extensive oral panels that we put together to assess candidates for executive positions. He has most recently served as Deputy Fire Chief overseeing administration, including budget, community relations, and human resources. His current duties also include overseeing emergency medical services, fire prevention, support services, and for Google Fire Communications. Prior to serving as Deputy Fire Chief, Harold was a battalion chief, fire captain, and fire engineer before that. He began his service in Glendale in 1989. Harold has prepared himself academically very well for the position. He has a master's degree in public administration from Cal State University of Long Beach and a bachelor's degree in public administration from Cal State University of Los Angeles. He also has an associate of science degree in fire technology from Glendale Community College. It really was a pleasure going to this recruitment, because we did attract a number of very top flight individuals. That's a problem you like to have. It is particularly rewarding when the individual chosen comes from within our own city family, and in this case, the Fire Department ranks. With that, it's my pleasure to ask for your approval by way of the motion that was just made of Harold Scoggins to become Glendale's Fire Chief. I should note he's here this evening with his wife, Abigail, and his four children, who I imagine, after you finish with the motion, he'll be happy to come forward and introduce. With that, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely. Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Congratulations, Chief. Would you please say a few words to us?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Mr. Starburton City Staff. I'd first like to start off by introducing my family. First, my lovely wife, Abigail, and my four children, Anthony, Jasmine, Nicole, and Isaiah. And to me, it's really important that I start off with them, because they really support me in everything I do for the organization. And I'm only gonna take a couple minutes here, but first of all, I'm very proud and honored to be selected as the next Fire Chief of the city of Glendale's Fire Department to serve the community. It really means a lot to me. I have really worked really hard for this. And I just want to let you know that you can count on me to be there, to be there, to answer the questions, to work hard, and to make sure our organization is moving forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I know that my, I know that my colleagues have some things to say to you, and I don't know who, they're all champing at the bit to go first. I'll start to my left with Mr. Weaver.
I've known Harold ever since I came on council in 97. Now, I never realized you'd move up so fast, whatever, to position. You know you can't return till your hair turns gray. Okay? So, I know we've got you for a number of years here. If anybody's gonna turn your hair gray, it'll be the public. So, good luck to you. You know, you stood out amongst the other candidates in the fire service. Your people you're going to administer, they gotta understand that when we saw the candidates and they talked about all the candidates, how much Harold stood out above all the others. So it was an easy choice, and it's gonna be fun working with you in the next few years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero.
Well, I just want to congratulate you, Chief. I've known you, well, we've known each other for many years, and you've always been, in addition to a very professional firefighter, you've also been an extremely decent human being. And that stands out, all the volunteer work you've done throughout the years. And I also want to commend Chief Howard, who was one of the top three finalists. He's been, I've known him just as long, I guess, and he's been around for a long, long time, has done a tremendous job for the fire service, so we had two excellent candidates. And then those four kids out there, I told them they had to be real good to their dad, 'cause he's gonna be, he's gonna be working even harder than he's worked in the past. And they all agreed, they would be good to their dad. So, congratulations, Chief.
Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I'm very proud, I'm very happy that you're leading our department. It's an excellent department, as you know. It's well-known, not just throughout the county, but throughout the state, for excellence and commitment. I know with the help of Chief Howard and the rest of your former colleagues at the department, that you're gonna take us to the next level of fire service and protect us as you would your own family. So, thank you, Chief.
And Councilmember Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Harold, congratulations. I just want to say, from day one, when they said Chris Gray has left, I said, "Just appoint him and get it over with." I don't know why we went through all this process, but sometimes you have to go through the process of looking everywhere else. It's like shopping you do. You go to 50 different stores, and you go back to the first one, because you liked it in the first place. And so I'm glad that you have the position. This is a very monumental time in our city, and you are at the helm at this time. It's gonna be challenging, but I know you are one of those people who stands up to the challenge. Based on the experience I have with you when you worked on Relay for Life, you don't give 100 percent, you give more than 100 percent. And I do appreciate all the hard work you have put into this city. Thank you, and good luck, and we'll be there for you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that, with my congratulations, Chief Scoggins, I have not known you as long as my colleagues having, being the new guy here. However, what an impression you have made on me in the last year. I am pleased you are our new chief. I'm thrilled for the city, very happy for you and for your family. I think it's wonderful they could be here for this honor, and I know you will do the city proud. Thank you again. Let me also ask our colleagues and staff if they have comments. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, maybe one last process comment. Glendale Fire Department, as you all indicated, is a world-class premier department. This is quite a momentous occasion, not only for Harold, but for the department, the change in command, and the fire service, by tradition, there is a bit of pomp and circumstance that goes along with that. So this evening won't be the only induction process we'll have for Harold. This is kind of his coming out and introduction to the community, but there will be a more ceremonial process. In this case, we'll be Harold's receiving his first chief's badge and changing of the command of the Fire Department, a momentous occasion for him and his family, but also a rather significant occasion for the department, and we want to give it the respect that it deserves. So with that, there will be news shortly. I know the department's probably working on it already for an appropriate ceremony where Harold will receive his chief's badge and be installed as chief of the department. And we'll let you all know that as soon as the date is set.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I want to go back to my colleague, Mr. Najarian, for a moment.
And it's wonderful, Chief, that we're opening the door to you, to your new position as chief, and we'll have other festivities, but I don't want to forget the great work done by Chief Biggs, who stepped in during a, what was a rather sudden departure by Chief Gray, fit in perfectly, and nurtured the department, and brought us forward to where we are today. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Scoggins, and don't leave us just yet, because there was a reason for moving this up a little further on the agenda. But before we go on to that, and I thank you, I'd like to go to my colleague, Mr. Weaver.
Yes, I'd like to move that the selection by the City Manager, Bob Elliott, as the Director of Administrative Services, Finance, Finance Director for the city of Glendale, is hereby approved pursuant to Glendale Charter, Article 4, Section 4.
Second.
Let me again go to our City Manager, Mr. Starburton.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I asked Matt Doyle, Director of Human Resources, if there's ever been a time that he can recall, that we have had two executive positions open at the same time and appointed on the same evening. He couldn't recall a time, and I doubt that it's occurred. In this case, we've gone through much the same extensive recruitment process for a new Director of Finance. And again, as we found with the Fire Chief, Glendale being the premier city that it is, attracted candidates from all over the United States. With that, as Mr. Yusefian pointed out, sometimes we only have to look in our own backyard, in this case, to find a top candidate to serve in what is a very important, critical position in the city, and that's Director of Finance. In this case, we have a gentleman who hails from Burbank, but actually resides in Glendale, Bob, or Robert, Bob Elliott. Bob, come on up. Bob Elliott is currently the Assistant Director of Finance for the city of Burbank, and has worked in Burbank for the past 16 years. Prior to that, he served in the private sector, which we try not to hold against him. Won for several years with a private accounting firm, where he was an auditing supervisor, and actually a member of Bill Fox's staff. Michelle worked for him those years ago in the audit trail, and also worked for a private corporation as controller. But he has spent the last 16 years with the city of Burbank, rising up through the ranks to the level of Director of Finance. He has two bachelor's degrees from Cal State University of Northridge, one in Business Administration, and the second in Accounting Theory and Practice. He is a certified public accountant, CPA, and is a member of the Government Finance Officers Association and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. I mentioned to you that he resides in Glendale. Lucky for us, and we'll make the commute for him, much shorter than he has now. He resides in Glendale with his wife Kathleen and two daughters. Once again, a nationwide search that brought us a good number of candidates, with an extensive review of all of them. Bob rose to the top, and I think is perfectly suited to take the helm of our finance department. And lest I forget, I want to give a special thanks to Ron Allers, who has done a tremendous job over the past year, leading the finance department, doing the yeoman's work on our budget and financial reports, and will continue to be the chief assistant to Mr. Elliott as he assumes his responsibilities in mid-June. With that, once again, it is my pleasure to appoint Mr. Elliott and ask that you give that your approval.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Clerk, you'd call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words, please?
Well, my hair's already gray, so that's out of the way. Now, this really is a dream job, and I appreciate everything in meeting you all today, and I hope I can live up to your expectations. Thank you.
You're welcome. My chairman and my colleagues have a few things to say to you before you escape. Let me start on the right here with Mr. Yusefian.
Well, by the way, I like your first name. I think it's very unique. We share a common goal, actually. One thing that I wanted to let you know is previously, your position, the person who was there, Bob France, just want to let you know he was from Oxy. He was a major basketball fanatic, and every time we had a game and the city had to represent itself, Bob was on the team. So I think you better start practicing, 'cause we will be calling you to play.
I don't know.
But welcome, and looking forward to working with you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian.
I'm very happy to welcome you to the Glendale family, and you just heard a few minutes ago, as we welcomed our new Chief Scoggins, with whom we've entrusted protecting our lives and property, we are entrusting you likewise in protecting our value, our finances, the city treasury, if you will. So we expect the very best of your efforts, and please feel free to speak out. As a new face, we're getting some fresh blood in our system. We may be doing things a little bit half-cocked. Please feel free to speak up. We're all family here, as it is, and we'll appreciate your frank comments and hopefully guide us along a secure path for our future. Thank you.
Although we do sometimes kill the messenger. I had brought shoulders.
You have to tell him that? Let him find out for himself.
Speaking of frank comments, let me turn to my colleague, Frank Quintero.
Well, congratulations, Bob. He is a Glendale resident, and today he told me that he watches Channel 6 and watches the city council. I think he's coming in with his eyes open. No, I think it's great, and I just feel somehow after Harold's admiral-type uniform, we should dress you in some sort of Marine Corps general.
Time to go to battle.
But anyway, you've got a great partner with Ron Allers. He's a tremendous guy, and the staff is excellent, so I think you're going to enjoy your work here in the city.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Councilmember Weaver.
Well, similar to what I said about Harold, in the interview process, when it came down to you, you stood so far above everybody else. Again, it was hard to deny you. And living in Glendale, everything is great. I like one comment you said at the end. I said, "It'll be interesting to see about six, eight months down the line, after you check the system out, what changes you think ought to be made to make us a better finance-controlled system." And you said you already have a number of things that you want to look at. Where's he start?
Well, he can start work right now, but he doesn't officially go on the payroll till mid-June.
So you can start in mid-June.
I'll be a volunteer.
Say goodbye, so I'll come over to Burbank and wish them the best of luck.
Thank you. I have a request for you, Mr. Elliott. Do you have a pen on you?
I do.
Could you hold it up for the public, please?
Oh, here we go, buddy.
I just want you, the folks at home and in the audience, to see this is a pen that does not have red ink in it. And let's keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. Elliott, for joining us. You do come so highly recommended. We're looking forward to working for you and with you. I say "for you" because we are all also citizens here and public servants, so we're gonna do some work together. And thank you for coming down here. Do you have family here that you'd like to introduce?
Yeah, unfortunately, my kids are doing homework, and my wife is trying to finish a project, so...
They're at home doing their math homework.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you.
Let us return to our normally scheduled program, and we'll, you'll see in a moment why we asked Chief Scoggins to please stay. Mr. City Clerk, if you could read the next item, which is 33C, I believe.
33C is a proclamation designating May 2008 as City of Glendale Employees Charitable Giving Month.
And I believe presenting that is Frank Quintero. And if we could have, is Mike Whittaker here? He is not here. Who is receiving that, then? Demi, very good. Please come on up.
Although all of the employees in the audience are actual recipients, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Glendale employees are dedicated public servants concerned about the health, vitality, and well-being of the community they serve, and through their caring and generous nature have the power and wherewithal to make a difference. Whereas the city of Glendale organization provides a program for city employees to contribute funds for the betterment of the community through charitable giving opportunities represented by the United Way of Greater Los Angeles and the Glendale Community Foundation." The United Way of Greater United Way of Greater Los Angeles helps to fund over 150 agencies throughout Los Angeles County, four agencies of which can be found right here in Glendale. The Glendale Community Foundation, as our community's endowment fund, has used the earnings from past invested contributions to fund more than 100 local agencies during the past 52 years. Therefore, John Draymond, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaims the month of May as City of Glendale Employees Charitable Giving Month."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I'm Debbie Mallon from Human Resources and the Chair of the 2008 City of Glendale Employees Charitable Giving Campaign. As the proclamation mentions, the city is holding its campaign during the month of May, and the campaign is considered an awareness campaign. It's meant to bring to light the need that exists in the community for services, the many agencies that provide those services, and the various ways that our city employees can help. City employees have a long history of supporting area charities through our payroll deduction program. In fact, currently, about 200 employees contribute $20,000 to $30,000 per year through payroll deductions. Steady contributions, year in and year out, are the lifeblood of many of the smaller agencies to keep them afloat and to help them provide the needed services in the community. Our payroll deductions ultimately go to two local area agencies, the United Way of Greater Los Angeles and the Glendale Community Foundation. To tell you a little bit about the United Way, they currently have a 10-year action plan called Creating Pathways Out of Poverty. The plan is designed to address basic needs, education, and financial stability. The Creating Pathways Out of Poverty partners include over 150 agencies in Los Angeles County. As the proclamation mentions, four of the agencies are located here in Glendale. And just so you'll know what they are, they are the Glendale Chapter of the American Red Cross, the Glendale Youth Alliance, the International Rescue Committee, and the New Horizons Family Center. Employees can also designate any 501-3C charity through their United Way contribution, giving them a lot of options. On the other hand, the Glendale Community Foundation was founded in 1956 and has served our community for 52 years, funding over 100 local agencies. Contributions have benefited a wide range of programs from arts to health, youth to seniors, handicapped homeless, a multitude of educational endeavors. I thought you would be interested to know that our City of Glendale employees have established a donor-advised endowment fund of their own, and the earnings from this fund have paid for workbooks for the Glendale Youth Coalition Leadership Retreat, recreational equipment for the Glendale YMCA, and American Hero for the Friends of the Library American Heroes Program, tissue typing for registration with Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry, and most recently, in 2007, city employees funded patient in-home monitoring systems at Glendale Memorial Hospital, signage for the Glendale Association for the Retarded Services Truck, equipment for the Glendale Unified Fitness Centers. A campaign of enthusiastic representatives from each city department has been formed and recently gathered for a kickoff orientation session. I was very impressed by their knowledgeable questions and how they sought to understand both the United Way and the Glendale Community Foundation. In fact, I would like to acknowledge the hard-working and dedicated campaign members by reading off their names and departments that they will be representing. We have Rita Buchanan and Kim Postolnikoff for City Clerk's Office, Sam Engel, Community Development and Housing, Anahede Arakalian, Development Services, Alwyn DeLeon, Finance, Tanya Gregorian and Julie Schaefer, Fire, Keisha Fulton, Sheila Martinez and Anna Vixen, Glendale Water and Power, Jane Care George for Human Resources, Suzanne Bonjour, Information Services, Michael Garcia, City Attorney's Office, Kathy Kautowski, Library, Lana Hadad, City Manager's Office, Hago Castavian, Parks Recreation and Community Services, Carmen Lukasian and Rosada Petrosian, Planning, Thelma Salaya, Police, Arm Ajemian and Alina Morsidian, Public Works. Some of the campaign committee members are here tonight to accept the proclamation, as is Donna Hurley of the United Way. I'd like to close by thanking you for your time and declaring May as City of Glendale Employees Charitable Giving Month. Donna Hurley brought some pins.
I'm afraid we are going to have to move on. We have a three-minute limit even for the presentation, so if you could conclude.
Now our work really begins. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Mr. City Clerk.
A 3D is a proclamation designating May 17, 2008, as Glendale's Great American Cleanup Day.
Mr. Weaver. And can we have Pam Ellis come up, please?
Okay. Whereas the Glendale City Council is committed to a litter-free community with neighborhoods that provide residents a high quality of life, and whereas the City of Glendale is fortunate to have conscientious, hard-working, and dedicated volunteers who feel a personal responsibility to continually maintain Glendale as a clean and beautiful community, and whereas the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale raises funds annually to support the city's community beautification efforts, and whereas the efforts of the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale resulted in a commitment from more than 800 volunteers to actively help eliminate graffiti, pick up litter, plant trees, and recycle household e-waste by participating in the 20th Annual Glendale Great American Cleanup Day on Saturday, May 17, and whereas these Glendale residents will join millions of other volunteers across the nation in performing community improvement projects as part of the Keep America Beautiful Great American Cleanup Day. Now, the Mayor, John Draymond, proclaims May 17, 2008, as Glendale's Great American Cleanup Day, and commend the hundreds of dedicated community volunteers and city staff who freely give their time and energy to help eradicate visual blight in our Jewel City.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, city councilmembers, city staff, I'd like to invite you and all of you and all the residents of Glendale to take part in Glendale's 20th Anniversary Celebration of Glendale's Great American Cleanup hosted by the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale and Neighborhood Services. On that Saturday, May 17, hundreds of volunteers are going to gather on the 100 block of North Isabel Street in front of the Glendale Police Department before going into the community, where they will paint out graffiti, pick up litter, plant trees, and clean out neglected vacant lots and alleys. Following the cleanup, volunteers will celebrate with a barbecue lunch provided by the Jewel City Kiwanis and live entertainment. We will also be holding a special electronic waste recycling drive during the event, and people with electronic waste can enter Isabel from Wilson Street from 9 to noon. It's open to the public, and from noon to 1 for businesses. Please dispose of your unwanted e-waste responsibly and help protect the environment. Bring as many items as you want. There's no limit. Tell your friends and neighbors, too. This Great American Cleanup is a national Keep America Beautiful event, which is expected nationwide to involve as many as 2.5 million people volunteering more than 8 million hours to clean, beautify, and improve over 15,000 communities during 30,000 events in all 50 states. So, for more information about enrolling or volunteering for this, you may call Neighborhood Services at 818-548-2125, or you can go online at www.cleanglendale.org. And I'd like to take this opportunity in advance to thank all of you and the hundreds of people who are going to be volunteering. Thank you for all your efforts in making Glendale the absolutely number one, and there's only one number one, Keep America Beautiful City in the state of California. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Next item, please.
A 3 is a proclamation designating May 10, 2008, as Fire Service Day.
And if I could have Councilmember Yusefian come up, and if I can ask our new Fire Chief to join us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the International Association of the Fire Chiefs has designated the second Saturday in May as Fire Service Day, a day of focused attention on the varied and technical service being offered by the Fire Department of the United States and Canada, and whereas today's firefighters are technically trained and highly skilled professionals, public servants, who perform many public services in addition to the suppression of fire, such as emergency medical responses, building inspections, and public fire safety education. And whereas many lives can be saved and many emergencies prevented or minimized with proper advanced education and training, and whereas the public can gain valuable lifesaving knowledge by seeking out and participating in fire education activities provided annually by the Fire Department, therefore, John Draymond, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaims May 10, 2008, as Fire Service Day, and calls upon the residents of Glendale to participate in the open house and activities offered at the Glendale Fire Station, and to take full advantage of the information provided by Fire Department personnel to enhance their safety and the safety of their families in the event of the fire and other emergency. This is your first proclamation, Chief. By the way, I designed this proclamation, and it looks gorgeous.
You did a great job.
And you look great with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Computer program.
Mayor, council staff, we'd like to invite all of you to come to Fire Service Day at our Fire Station 21 on May 10. At 9 o'clock in the morning, we'll start with a free breakfast, and you'll get to see the new Fire Chief. I'm sure cooks some pancakes. I know Chief Howard, every year, he's always there cooking pancakes for everybody as well. At 10 o'clock, we'll start with some demonstrations. We'll show the jaws of life. There'll be some activities there for the kids as well. So, we'd like to invite everyone to come and enjoy themselves at Fire Station 21 on May 10.
Thank you very much.
A 3F is a proclamation designating May 18 through 24, 2008, as National Public Works Week.
Councilmember Quintero. And if now I have my schedule right, if Mike Whittaker could join us, if he's here.
If not, he's here.
If not, we know Mr. Zern is here.
Mr. Mayor, we have Brian Torres and Arm Ajemian who are here.
Very good.
He's already been up there once.
Mr. Quintero.
Let me start by saying for the public watching at home that these are the workers that really do the bread and butter here in the City of Glendale. Whereas public works, projects, and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the City of Glendale and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside. The support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as building and safety, maintenance service, project management, mechanical maintenance, facility services, engineering, traffic and transportation, and integrated waste management. The employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure upkeep in a quality manner. A well-planned, designed, and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent on a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer service, who strive to accomplish their everyday task efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community they serve. Therefore, John Draymond, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaims the week of May 18 to the 24, 2008, as National Public Works Week, and I also want to thank Steve Zern for doing a great job at public works.
Mr. Mayor, we streamlined the heck out of this, so we were going to keep it real short. I was just going to make the announcement that on May 22, we'll be having our Public Works Week open house down at our corporate yard facilities in our Integrated Waste Management Yard. That's 541 and 548 West Chevy Chase. We start off in the morning at 6:30 with an appreciation breakfast for our staff. Many of us will be out there cooking pancakes as well. And then at 10:30, we're open to the public, and this is where you can come down, take a look at our facilities, our equipment. We have some lunch. We usually have a really good turnout from the grade school kids. It's a lot of fun. We used to have it out in the plaza. It got so big, we decided to take it down at the yard and sort of get them more accustomed to exactly what we're doing down there. Tours of our recycling facility and so forth. But all of the public is welcome, and we would hope to see all of you down there, as many as can make it.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Let's go to our last proclamation.
Last proclamation, a 3G is proclamation designating May 18 through the 24, 2008, as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Councilmember Najarian.
Been you guys busy tonight, huh?
We are.
Mayor, here's your proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Glendale residents, employees, and visitors benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, John Draymond, Mayor of the City of Glendale, does hereby proclaim the week of May 18 to May 24, 2008, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage all Glendaleans to recognize and honor the emergency medical service workers who provide such outstanding service to the residents of Glendale.
Thank you.
Mayor, council staff, I'm Greg Godfrey, the EMS paramedic coordinator for the Glendale Fire Department. And on behalf of the Fire Department and the local hospitals here in town, Glendale Adventist, Glendale Memorial, and Verdigo Hills, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation, for recognizing EMS Week. As most of you know, in the Fire Department, EMS is what we do mostly. We go to fires, and we do that, but EMS is always something that's on the rise for us. It's our call volume that continues to rise every year. Our hospitals here are extremely busy. They're definitely part of our EMS system. It's not just the Fire Department and the paramedic system. It's the hospitals, the ER staff, and everybody as well. And we just want to thank you for recognizing EMS Week with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. City Clerk, next item. Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good.
Thank you. I'm sure they appreciate it. Mr. City Clerk.
A 3H is the appointment of Ms. Terry Chan to the Glendale Water and Power Commission. This was made by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Terry Chan for the Water and Power Commission. He has his degree from UCLA in electrical engineering. However, he corrected that by getting his master's in electrical engineering at USC.
Oh, I thought you were going to say he corrected that by getting his law degree from USC.
No, he may be working on that. Stands a resume that he's worked on. You can read it. It's lengthy. I think he'll be a good fit. I did consult with our Water and Power Director. He consulted with his staff, and the whole list came back. Mr. Chan was by far the best qualified individual. He put on the Water and Power Commission. What? Excuse me? Oh, Terry's a woman. Oh, my God.
Ms. Terry Chan.
I'll second that.
You know, I tried to call her on her cell phone, and I got a caller and apologized. You know, I tried to call her on her cellphone, now I gotta call her and apologize.
Well, we all have our jobs to do.
I'm gonna have to take her out to lunch for this.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Yes.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. All right, next item, please.
While I speak, Reddick, Mr. Mayor, just to point out that the term of Terry Chan shall commence May sixth, because there is actually, uh, there was a resignation, we don't want an individual just serving one week, so take effect, May sixth for a full term.
Yes, you don't mind, May sixth. We're gonna blow it twice in one night.
At three I is appointment of Mr. Hank Sheets to the Planning Commission, this was made by Councilmember Quintero.
The last time I checked, absolutely.[651.12][651.12](laughing) Hank Sheets has a, uh, extensive history in the, uh, city, he's got a bachelor's degree from Redlands University, he's done numerous projects as an engineering manager, and, uh, volunteered for many, many years in this, uh, city, and I think he's gonna do an excellent job on the, uh, Planning Commission.
Very good. Do we have a?
Second, I'll, I'll second.
We have a second, all right. Mr. Weaver, second.
Uh, I, I would like to thank Mr. Quintero for picking Mr. Sheets, I've known him for many, many years. Uh, besides having all the qualifications, I've known him for many years to have been in different committees, uh, contributing to this community, especially deals with planning issues. So, and he's a very reasonable person, and, uh, thank you for picking Mr. Sheets.
Any other comments before we go to a roll call? All right, Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Next item, please.
At J is appointment of Ms. Seda Stepanian to the Historic Preservation Commission, made by Councilmember, uh, uh, this nomination was made by Councilmember Yusefian, excuse me.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to nominate Seda Stepanian. Seda is a female's name, by the way, and she happens to be female, and, uh, she went to USC and got her MBA from USC, she happens to be an architect. She also had an opportunity to work, uh, with Ruben Amerian, who happens to be on the, the Design Review Board, and, uh, uh, Mr. Amerian had glowing words about her, and, uh, she's an architect, and I think, uh, she understands preservation and architecture, so that's why I'm appointing her.
I'll second.
Any comments before we vote? Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes, and I'd like to say thank you and congratulations to all of our new commissioners, be they male or female.
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Yes, yes, yes.
Also, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the, the other commissioners that they were replaced today, uh, for their service, uh, to this community, many of them worked at least six years or so, uh, providing services. So, thank, I don't, I don't want to skip that, thank you for all those people who gave their time to the city.
Very good. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Next item, the City Councilor's staff comments.
Mr. Weaver.
Uh, two or three. Uh, one again is that report coming to us on the traffic flow in Harvard and the four-way walk on Brandon Broadway. Yeah, Americana's opening in two days, and it's not in.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, I sent some preliminary information over to the city manager today, uh, I can tell you briefly that on the parking issue in the north side of, uh, Harvard, between Maryland and Brand, the Brand View Collection has a valid valet permit, and that permit is actively used, especially on Fridays and Saturdays, I believe they have a four-hundred-person event this Saturday. It'll be very difficult for us to take that parking away from them. Um, our traffic engineers in the police department don't believe, because it's not wide enough to get a through lane, uh, that it will have that big of an impact, although we're monitoring it every day, we'll see what we need to do in that regard. Also, the police department did some preliminary, uh, information gathering, and our traffic engineers got back to us on the scramble crossings, which they believe will cause more traffic problems than they will solve. Uh, again, without going into huge detail, that's kind of the response, the greater detail, uh, Mr. Starbird will have.
All I know is, the report I was giving, expect a hundred and fifty thousand people there this week, seventy thousand cars, and if we don't find a way to move the cars faster with the people off the street, I'm convinced, as an engineer, we have a big problem. I don't know if human traffic is, coming up, it's gonna be even worse, I don't buy that. But, all I can do is one person suggest, the traffic people say it isn't a problem, or say it's gonna be a problem, I don't. And I've stood there and looked at that traffic on Harvard, and I think the police are going to take it out this, for Friday, to move the traffic in. You gotta move that traffic west on Harvard. Everybody that lives in east Glendale is gonna come down Glendale Avenue to west on Harvard, into one lane of traffic. So, traffic engineering better find a way to move the cars.
Again, we have that conflict with the valet, that we have to, we have to.
How long is that good for yet?
I believe it's good for a year at a time, I don't know where they are within it.
Well, then when the year's up, then we oughta look at it again. Traffic flow is more important.
Uh, you had, uh, did you have another? You have another?
Yeah, and I was there yesterday, and I caught two people smoking in the Americana on Brand. When is that coming back, so we can eliminate smoking in the Americana? I mean, I was watching them drop the cigarette butts, everything, first day. Now, I've asked for six to nine months to do an overlay on that zone, to prevent any smoking in, uh, Americana. Mr. Caruso was not going to rent, lease, or sell a single condo or apartment to a smoker. And I do not care to see fifty, a hundred thousand people in there, crowded in like it's gonna be, and every other person with a cigarette in their hand with kids there. So, when is this gonna get here?
Uh, do we, uh, do we have an idea of when that is coming back?
You know, we don't have it on the existing, uh, projected agenda, so it's, it's out beyond a month, but I'll double-check, um, I'll have to get back to you, I don't know offhand.
All right, let's, let's please get back to Mr. Weaver and the rest of us.
I've asked for months, I mean, it still takes three of us to do it. Uh, two other things, uh, the President of the United States has declared May two thousand eight as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, there's over thirty-five thousand Asians in this community, and they have nothing. So I'd like to see a proclamation put together, you need me to help get the proper people to receive it? I'd be happy to.
Um, let me ask, uh, if you could, uh, speak to Linda, so she can coordinate that for us.
Sure. And the other one, the last one, uh, June twelfth is Philippine Independence Week, and we've always given a proclamation on that.
Same, same thing, and, uh, I think she mentioned one of those to me, and it was supposed to be a go anyway, but if you wouldn't mind following up with her.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I just wanna say that the Brand View Collection has been there for many, many, many years, it's a site of numerous banquets, nonprofit banquets, et cetera, and I for one have no interest in taking away their, uh, parking. That's also true of that business on the corner, and another newly established, uh, business. So as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Zern, don't bother, because I'm not about to take a small business, or small businesses, and somehow affect their business for a major, uh, a major project. Then the second thing is, Mr. Caruso should talk to one of his senior, uh, managers, because if you remember Mr. Najarian, he was smoking a cigarette when he was talking to us last night in front of the, in front of the, uh, Cheesecake Factory, so.
And it is not open yet?
All right, um, Mr. Yusefian, any comments? Not necessarily on that, just, if you have any announcements or comments, uh, no, okay, Mr. Najarian.
I have several. Um, as you, as you may have know, we have concluded the Week of Remembrance in the City of Glendale, and I would like to thank, uh, everyone in the community that, uh, helped out, that were either speakers or performers. I'd like to thank, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, uh, you did, uh, come forward and speak, address the public on two occasions. Uh, I would like to give special thanks to Zizet Ayad, who really was the spark plug to get this entire, uh, process going, it was a lot of hard work, and I think it worked out, uh, very well, uh, for everyone, I hope the public enjoyed the programs. Uh, Mr. Mayor, on June twenty-eighth, Saturday, June twenty-eighth, uh, at eight o'clock and at one o'clock, at the Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter of the, uh, American Red Cross at fifteen oh one South Brand Boulevard, uh, there will be a first aid, uh, certificate class being offered, and it's only, uh, ten dollars if you pre-register, the normal cost for this course is forty. Uh, having a first aid certificate is, uh, for you young folks is critical to get you in any sort of jobs, whether you're thinking about being a counselor, or a lifeguard, or anything like that, and for those adults, it's always a good, uh, training to have emergency first aid, that is on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, eight o'clock, or one o'clock, at the Red Cross Building, fifteen oh one South Brand Boulevard. And, uh, finally, Mr. Mayor, several months ago, uh, there was a request to put on the agenda, uh, an explanation of the MTA's congestion pricing plan. Uh, I, uh, deliberately held off because, uh, the, uh, the plans were a little bit, uh, clouded at that point, they are a little more clear now, uh, we've received a grant of, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty million from the federal government, and I conferred with Mr. Starbird, if, uh, council is willing, we have a light evening on June third, I can have someone from the MTA come forward and give perhaps a ten-minute overview of what this congestion pricing is gonna be for the ten freeways and the two-ten freeways.
I think that's an excellent idea, if the agenda, uh, if it lets, if I have consensus from the council, let's do that. Yes, Mr. Quintero?
I actually forgot, I also wanted to thank the, uh, committee for the, uh, Week of Remembrance, I attended both, uh, both events, and they were excellent, the speakers at the library were just excellent, and then the Meaning of Genocide commemoration at the, uh, Alex, I think, obviously, it was, it was sold out, packed, but in addition to that, I thought the program itself was one of our best programs, so congratulations to the committee, they did, and the staff, they did a great job.
Very good. Um, I have a few announcements also, um, uh, one is also the, the, uh, Week of Remembrance events, uh, were terrific, uh, but in particular, the event at the Alex is always a highlight, uh, for many people, myself included, I have to say, after last year, I was unsure that it could ever top that, um, that evening, but this year, it was just even better, it was remarkable, uh, wonderful concert, extremely talented people, if you missed it, folks, let me tell you, you really missed something meaningful and, uh, entertaining, uh, in a, uh, in a thought-provoking way as well. Uh, I'd like to thank all of the people that participated in that throughout the city, the staff, and, uh, private individuals that put a lot of time into that, as well as, uh, Councilmember Najarian for chairing the committee. Um, I'd also like to, uh, let you know about an event I attended last night at the, uh, at the Central Library, the Unity mural, that has been created, you're going to be hearing more about it, but the unveiling was last night. This is a, uh, a, a community mural created by, uh, art students from, um, uh, Daly, uh, High School, uh, in Glendale, and, uh, incredible job, uh, under the theme of De Pluribus Unum, Out of Many One. And this is a remarkable, uh, hand-painted collage, uh, that took about six months' work to, uh, markup, design, put into effect, and it will be, uh, at the library, uh, for some time, and then it will be appearing in different places, I understand it is going to be at the, going to be moving up to the, uh, Arts and Crafts Festival in Montrose, as well as over to the Alex Theater, so you'll have a chance to see it, it's truly, truly a remarkable piece of work. Um, and I wanna congratulate all the, all the students, the young men and women who worked on that, as well as the principal there, uh, and the faculty staff, uh, and the, uh, uh, school board for their help in moving this, uh, project along, and the school district as well. I'd also like to announce that, uh, May the fourth, uh, there's a trifecta in Montrose, that's, uh, three public events, all coalescing on two streets, that is the, uh, Seventh Annual Kids and Critters Day, which is everything about children and animals, that's being moved from its usual time slot, which is late summer, to this date in May, along with the, uh, Glendale Humane Society's Wags and Whiskers Walk, uh, along with Proms Plus, uh, uh, event, which is a Taste of Montrose. So, uh, you can, uh, see it in alternating full-page ads, uh, in the Glendale News Press, starting tomorrow all the way through Saturday, uh, and, uh, it is a terrific event, nine AM till two PM, lots of, uh, fun for the kids, you can bring the pets, uh, you can participate, raise funds, uh, watch a magic show, watch Wild Wonders, uh, animal behavioralists out there, uh, get a chance to pet a python, and a porcupine, and a, and an Arctic fox, and a cheetah. So it's a great, great lot of fun out there, plus you can have some awfully good food, and check out all the restaurants, uh, in the, uh, Montrose area there for a small fee, you get a wristband, and then you can go try out samples, all of that, uh, along with the music and, uh, other entertainment. Um, next, the last, uh, item is a letter that, uh, we all received from, um, the, uh, President of the Adam Square Merchants Association, uh, Mr. John Seinfeld, related to the, um, the, uh, Residential District Sign Program that we're working on, um, he was concerned, I won't read the whole letter, but he was concerned that, um, Adam Square, after the great effort that the city has put into upgrading the square and, uh, money being spent there, that we would then change the name to Tropico on signs, I just want to let him know, Adam Square is not Tropico, Tropico is Tropico, and, uh, Adam Square is Adam Square. Uh, we, nor would we rename, uh, Kenneth Village, uh, El Miradero, the, the two are not the same, so, uh, and the other part of the letter about having more prominent signage for the square, uh, i.e. freeways, or, or so on, uh, I think that's a, a great idea, and, um, Mr. Seinfeld, I will check with you, and also your organization, and check with our staff to see what we can do about that. Um, and then, uh, lastly, uh, is, uh, simply that during our, our agenda preview, there was a mention of, of, uh, budget study session in the morning next Tuesday, uh, there will not be a budget study session next Tuesday, our next one will be the following Tuesday, on the thirteenth of May, uh, and, uh, that's the latest breaking news. And then lastly, I'd just like to thank all my colleagues, so today's been a very unusual day, I don't know if there's a full moon, or what it is, but the, uh, the, uh, peace lily seems to be growing, and it must have had some, today we even had Mr. Yusefian suggesting that we should all literally dance out of this chamber, arm in arm, I mentioned the fact that people might not recognize it as the Glendale City Council, uh, but it's been a very good productive day with a lot of debate, uh, some disagreements, but good, good, solid, vigorous debate, which I'm sure will continue on through the evening, but I just want to thank my colleagues for, uh, for a good productive day. And with that, let's move on to the consent items, Mr. Seinfeld.
Mayor, I would just like to add, um, that, uh, for those watching at home who were unable to make it to the Week of Remembrance events, um, because of, uh, limited capacity, uh, that both events are actually being aired throughout this week on GTV Six, that was a late-breaking bulletin from downstairs, letting us know that anyone interested can watch, tune into GTVC Six, and see, uh, both events.
Thank you.
Next item is consent items, including minutes to follow in the routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
With exception five eight, I've moved the consent calendar.
That's five H, like Howard.
Yeah.
Yes. Five G?
Yes.
Like Giraffe.
Okay, with removal of five G and H, I moved the consent calendar.
All right.
Second.
Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes. Let's go to the item at five G.
The five G is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Contract Amendment to the Existing Professional Services Agreement for the Chevy Chase nine-six-eight Reservoir Replacement Project, at G one is a motion authorizing City Manager to execute a contract amendment with Kennedy Jenks, uh, contract number is one zero four one three seven, and then Mount Nautic sees seventy, seventy-seven thousand, seventy dollars for additional design services.
Mr. Yusefian?
I have no question, I just wanted to vote it separately.
Oh, okay, very good. Uh, do we have any other comment while we're at this point?
Move five G one.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. With no other debate then, Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
No.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. We have the next item.
At H is City Manager Regarding Professional Services Agreement with Ray Thorn and Associates for Leadership Development Services. At H1 is a motion approving Professional Services Agreement for Organizational Development Services.
Okay, thank you. We've had a request this be pulled by Dr. Richard Espirito. There he is. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. After reviewing this proposal, I think Ray Thorn and Associates is a very competent, capable organization. But I do have one question regarding this agreement. I understand this was submitted by Mr. Robert McCall, prepared by Mr. Robert McCall. And I wondered if, by some chance, his personal client relationship with Ray Thorn and Associates tainted his opinions regarding this particular proposal. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, any comment, Mr. City Manager?
Only to my knowledge, there isn't one.
Okay. Mr. Quintaro?
I'll be voting against this. I don't think, obviously, there's any problem with Mr. McCall, but I just think this is a lot of money in leadership development services. I think we can spend fifty thousand dollars in some other manner.
Mr. Weaver?
Move five-H one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments before we?
This is two years.
Yes, Mr. Yusefian?
I'll be also voting against it. Nothing against Mr. Thorn, but I think we're trying to save some money and familiar with the type of services he provides. I think sometimes there's a lot of just getting together and chatting that takes place. And when I used to be in the city chambers, I mean, city halls, and there was a lot of one-to-one personal discussions that takes place. And I really don't think it has anything to do with leadership. So I don't think that's been going on for many, many years, and I have not seen a major change on anything, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Kusakian?
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintaro?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
No.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Next item is, let me just make a little explanation here and preempt you, Mr. City Clerk, just to remind you that oral communications now currently is at the conclusion of the action items on tonight's agenda. However, at this point in the program, we would, the programmed agenda, we would want to hear from those who would voluntarily take three minutes or less to make announcements of public events. I do have one card, and that is from Monica Marquez. Thank you. Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Monica Marquez, President of the League of Women Voters of Glendale Burbank. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, April 30th, the League of Women Voters of Glendale Burbank will present a public forum on campaign contributions in Glendale. The forum will take place from seven to nine PM at the Glendale Forest Station 21 Community Room, located at 421 Oak Street, Glendale, across the street from the Glendale Galleria parking structure. The public is invited to attend and to submit written questions to the panelists. Panelists include Robert Stern, President of the Center for Governmental Studies. An expert in campaign finance reform, he was General Counsel to the California Parapolitical Practices Commission for nine years. He has authored a number of statewide initiatives, including the Political Reform Act of 1974. Garen Yoparian, Treasurer of several Burbank City Council campaigns. Leanne Pelham, Executive Director of the Los Angeles Ethics Committee. And Odella Suarez, Attorney and former candidate for Glendale City Council. Questions for the panelists may be submitted in advance to our leak phone at 818-247-2407 or at our website, LWVGlendaleBurbank.org, or in writing in person at the forum. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marquez. Let's move on, please, to item seven.
At seven, under adoption of ordinances, at seven A is an urgency ordinance amending and adding certain provisions to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to trespass and relating to obstructing, impeding, or interfering with city business with redevelopment agency or housing authority business on agency or authority-owned or controlled property. This was offered on April 22nd, 2008 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Draymond, move seven-A. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion at all? No. No cards. So let's move on, Mr. City Clerk, with a roll call.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. Let's have the next item, please.
At seven A is an ordinance authorizing the execution of First Amendment to the Statutory Development Agreement and Participation Agreement by and between the City of Glendale, together with the Glendale Redevelopment Agency and DreamWorks Animation LLC, also offered on April 22nd, 2008 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, move seven-B. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None. All right. I have no cards. Mr. City Clerk.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintaro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. On to the next item.
Under action items, item eight on the agenda, at eight A is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, regarding park safety and security systems at various park facilities, and recommendations for improvements. At eight A1 is a motion directing staff to develop plans and an RFP.
Folks, shh. Folks, let's try to keep it down. All right. Mr. City Clerk, Mr. City Manager, pardon me.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask George Chapchin, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, to give you the staff report. George.
Thank you.
George, can I ask you about how long you think we're going to be?
Well, I think, you know, we can go quickly through our presentation, and then this is just a matter of questions. I'm not sure how many people are here, Mayor Draymond, to speak on this item.
Okay. I think there's two late-breaking bulletins just handed to us. Mr. Chapchin, why don't we say ten minutes or so?
Absolutely. The locals can just do the presentation. As you know, why we're up here is because several months ago, actually about six or seven months ago, we've had several incidences at the parks that necessitated looking at park security overall in all of our parks, specifically at several different parks. Recently, we had the Cerritos Park, which we opened up, and a day later, we had about three thousand dollars worth of damage by graffiti and vandalism. As you know, Car Park, we had community meetings in Car Park, and one of the complaints about Car Park was the basketball court was attracting the wrong type of individual, there were marijuana use, just the wrong type of activity. Brand Park in June 2007, we had the shooting. Lucky for us that no one got hurt. But as you know, because of that, we took some action to our parks at this point. Just to let the council know that we have a number of parks here that are still, are kind of facing the same type of issues, just because of the change in demographics, the heavy use of the parks. But what we're facing is probably what the city faces overall. We are, you know, the parks, we haven't had major incidences in the parks, except for that shooting, for quite some time now. So I don't want people to kind of overreact because we had that one shooting. But the Adult Recreation Center, we have issues there, homeless issues. Brand Park, of course, Car Park, which is located near the high school and at the outskirts of the city. The Casa Adobe, San Rafael, we've had some kids hanging out there, we've had issues there. Cerritos Park, as I stated, Chess Park, it seems to be an area where people are congregating. Glen Oaks Park, the neighbors there, in a community meeting, were concerned about, you know, the wrong type of element coming in. You know, we were looking at the caretaker house and moving the caretaker house. But their concern was having someone on site to make sure that the wrong type of element didn't come into the site. Griffith Manor Park, again, we had community meetings there as well, and the neighbors were concerned about the bad element coming into Griffith Manor Park. And that has some design issues for us, because there's a building and people have a tendency to hang out behind the building. Maple Park, as you know, is heavy, heavy use. Pacific Park as well, and Palmer Park. As a result of some of the things that went on with Car Park and Brand specifically, as you know, we removed the basketball courts, both at Brand and Car Park. The basketball courts were an area where it was attracting the youth. And at Brand, it was a vantage point. When the police came in or rangers came in, they saw the public safety personnel first and just kind of dispersed. We halted construction of the picnic shelter at Car, just based on what the neighbors had stated. Again, they didn't want the wrong type of element. They didn't want more people coming in from outside the city using the park. We did station a security guard to monitor the incoming vehicles at Brand. And in our neighborhood meeting, that seems to be working very well. The neighbors really did like the security guard up front. And part of that is, we changed the ingress and egress. We closed off the west entrance or west exit to Brand Park from three o'clock to ten o'clock, to make sure that our person up front knew who was coming, took down license numbers and who was leaving the park. Changed circulation patterns, the speed bumps, those type of things to deal with the issues there. Here's what we've heard in our community meetings. You know, they want to see more presence, whether it's police or rangers, they just want to see more bodies at the parks. They'd like to see perimeter fencing and gates. They'd like to see, maybe the parks close earlier, the ones that do have gates. And this is the same thing for Car, Brand, and Griffith Manor as well. Improve lighting, eliminate, you know, again, the shelter. But the basketball court and some of the amenities seem to be an issue for neighbors that live near the park. So that's, in the three community meetings that we've held so far, those are some of the things that we did here. Entry gates, additional rules and signs, and pruning, reducing the canopy of the trees to open it up a little bit. In this report, we've got several components to it. The physical improvements, we looked at physical improvements, as we just talked about, technological improvements in operations and staffing. And we've done a lot of work, and we have a spreadsheet that I can give you in terms of looking at the physical improvements and what they may cost at both Brand and Car, and some of the other parks as well. So we have done a substantial amount of work. We just don't have the budget at this point for it. And it's one of the reasons why we're here. The technological improvements, I have to say, is going to require us actually contracting with someone who knows security. The camera systems aren't as easy as we thought they would be. By state law, whenever we record something, all that recorded material has to be kept for a year. And that requires tremendous amount of server capacity, which is going to cost anywhere between two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to five-hundred thousand, just for the servers. There's all kinds of resolutions per second and other technical areas that we're not familiar with, that we'd like to have a consultant come in and look at. And then the third piece of it is the operation and staffing. I think there's a number of ways of handling the operations and staffing. We've looked at that. I think what we'd like to do is come back to the council during the budget session, because that does have an impact on budgets. Because depending on the model, it can be, you know, police, rangers, you know, maybe rangers handling the open space and interpretive police doing enforcement, or more rangers. One way or another, it will cost more money to do that. And I, you know, if you indulge us, we'd like to come back and during the budget session, talk about that, so it's not, so that we don't do it in a vacuum here at this point. Basically, that's the report, and we're just seeking direction from you in terms of what you'd like to do in terms of the security improvements for the parks.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chap. All righty. Let me, well, this is, let me just start by saying, this is in the form of a motion. So why don't we see if we have a motion and a second before we go forward? Mr. Quintaro?
Well, I would, yeah, I would be ready to propose a motion, because I do think we need additional security at Brand Park specifically.
Before we get into the proposal, I just want to know if we have a motion and a second before we go forward with any.
Blessable information.
Yes.
I don't know what I'm making a motion to. It says in here, motion directing staff to develop plans and an RFP. Now, I can make a motion to develop plans. I don't know about RFP, because in order to have an RFP, you have to have this council agree on a plan. I can't decide what the plan is going to be based on your PowerPoint. You're telling me I have this, you know, matrix, but I don't want to give it to you. You don't give me an opportunity to come back with a plan, and give me an opportunity to come back with a plan. So I don't know what the plan is, to be honest with you.
And that is one of the reasons I asked the question the way I asked, because I, what made more sense to me, Mr. Chapchin, is what you said in the conclusion of your remarks, is it would be hard for us to make a motion in a second and then hear from the public on an issue when we don't have a firm target as to what the issue is. There are a bunch of facets to it. We can speak in general, and certainly we'll hear from the public, but we can speak in general as to, and ask some questions. But a lot of this is going to hinge on what we need and what the budget is and so on. So would you like us to do that?
Absolutely, Mayor Draymond. I think what we've done is we've looked at the park improvements, the physical improvements, and we do have some figures for that, and we can always present that with dollar figures, not at this meeting. But we do need some direction. We'd like to go out and hire a consultant that can actually look at the technological security measures that we need at the parks.
Right. Mr. City Manager?
And that touches on one of the facets that we need direction on, and that is the use of technology in our parks. For example, video cameras. We've seen so many circumstances, like our newest park, Cerritos Park, where short of having somebody there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, we frankly can't keep up with some of the destruction that's taking place in that park to what are some very nice, brand-new facilities. Our reaction, as you know, there's a place for technology. Almost every one of these park situations where we find that kind of problem, our reaction is to position staff down there or expect the police or rangers to patrol it often enough is almost cost prohibitive. But the use of technology, for example, in these kinds of settings, and you'll find them in almost every one of those parks that George listed, the council's comfortableness with utilizing technology more and more as security systems in these park settings. For example, feedback on that topic. Where we'd like to then come in and begin to design some systems to meet the needs.
Mr. City Attorney, can I go to you for a moment? We have what is now a motion, and I'm sensing that we're not really ready to make a motion as much as we are more prepared to make comment, ask questions, hear from the public, and give some direction. I don't, that's what I'm hearing from at least.
I'm hearing the same thing as well, and I think if your question is, is that appropriate parliamentary procedure, the answer is, under Robert's Rules of Order, if you follow it technically, Roberts wants a motion and a second. But by tradition and custom and convention, the city council, for many, many years, has not done that. And Robert's Rules of Order essentially is nothing more than a parliamentary guideline. It is not a hard and fast rule.
I guess my question really isn't that. I understand Robert's Rules of Order. My question is whether or not I need a more formal request of consensus from my colleagues.
It really depends on what you're looking for. If you're just, if you're really trying to gather more information so that you can craft a motion that would make, where you can gain consensus, you can certainly go about it that way.
All right. Let's do that. And Mr. Weaver?
It's like in the pilot technology, there's two types of video systems. The one that's on a twenty-four-hour circuit repeats, and the other, so requires a monitoring at some remote location. So which one are you asking us to allow you to get a proposal on? And what is the preliminary cost? I don't know what I'm.
Well, I asked, so there's investigative, actually, there is one where it would take a live body to actually sit there and look at the live.
At a remote location?
Right. And there's crime prevention, and there's investigative, where you just take the video feed and give it to the police officers if there is a crime, and they'll go solve it. And again, it just depends on which way we go and the resolution and what the police officers would need, or the police department would need. So I guess what we're asking is, allow us to contract out with a consultant who knows these things and come up with a recommendation. We can come back to the council.
In other words, for which type and estimated cost?
Right.
So you're more looking for direction than a motion, I think.
Mr. Starbert?
In looking at this, it seems to me that likelihood is you would say yes to all three of these things. And we might possibly bring them back at different times. For example, I would think, yes, you would want us to look at the regulations so that we can adequately control the parks from a statutory standpoint. Yes, you would want us to bring you back a plan for the application and use of technology in the various parks where we think it's appropriate. And third, during the budget review, yes, bring you back a plan for staffing that we think is appropriate for the use of either rangers or police department to bring the level of security at a point that the staff and we believe is appropriate. level of security at a point that the staff and we believe is appropriate.
I'll say. Exactly.
Great.
That's what I was going to say.
That's essentially what the motion says.
Right. While we're waiting for the technology decisions and so forth, there's no reason why we can't begin to discuss additional park rangers, talk about locking the parks at night, perimeter, park fencing, gates. I mean, there's things that we can do, physical things, before we make any decisions that are going to cost $500,000. We're going to have to think about what's going to be best.
Well, is that the, would you like to continue on then with your recommendations? Because they're looking for direction tonight.
Well, I do think we need additional park rangers. I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. They're dedicated to the park system, and they're sworn officers, so I think that's the way to go. And then in terms of gates and fencing, locking parks at night, I think that's a no-brainer. I mean, that's done in Europe and in all parts of the world. You've got beautiful parks with nice fencing and gates, and at the end of the day, you lock them up. I do think we need existing lighting, and specifically at Brand Park, sometimes after events at the, at the library there, I mean, you go to your car and it's so, so low-keyed. They should be turned off when the parks close, but I think the existing lighting could be built up a little bit. And I think we do need to post the park's rules and regs, so there's no question what we have in mind. And then finally, the basketball courts are a little more of a, have to think about where at Brand Park it might be appropriate, or even Carr Park for that matter. But I think these are things that we can do as soon as possible. We've been talking about Brand Park for, what, a year, I guess? Yeah. So it's been, it's time to get moving.
Councilmember Quintero, and we do have all of that, but we have cost figures associated with it as well. For example, the security guard, we didn't have that budgeted. We've just kind of absorbed that, but there does need to be a budget for the security guard. It is working well. And we need to build kind of a station there, a small station for that security guard to be there. Again, that has cost implications. We have cost figures for gates, locking gates, and those are about $75,000, $80,000. So we do have, we've done work on that. We're looking at that. It's just a matter of, some of these are budgetary issues that we hadn't planned for initially.
Let me go to the city manager, then to Mr. Weaver, then to Mr. Najarian.
Once again, and I apologize that George and I didn't do this before this report got on the agenda, but it seems to me the answer to the questions he's posing is sort of yes to all of the above, and get them put together so we can consider them as we bring to you the general fund budget over the next six weeks through your review, and make a recommendation to you on a plan that we think is going to work for both staffing, use of technology, and regulations that'll get the parks to level of security that I think we can all imagine you want and the community wants.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Let's.
Yeah, that's where I was heading. We just had our first budget study session, and we're going to cut by 10, 15 percent from departments. Virtually everything here, other than locking the parks up, has costs associated with it. We have that magnitude of costs. Everything here, this is from the Brand Park survey, a police substation, foot patrols, fire department to participate in patrols, more Rangers, cameras, emergency call boxes, regular patrols, which, every one of those is costing to the general fund. And they're all good and necessary, but every park doesn't have walls around it or gates. So it's a case-by-case. Brand is definitely different because it's a huge park. You can't see from one to the other. Glen Oaks Park, I can look across the one block and see the other side, and there's no fences. So they're totally different. But that's the budgetary process, and it's questionable, what authority do we have to give you tonight so that you can have some numbers so when we get to yours in the budget study session, we can weigh it in? I don't know what your schedule is. Is that what you want from us tonight?
Well, yeah, and I think we're ready with the physical improvements when we come to you during a budget session. You know, we're ready for that.
So you can give us cost now, all the things that the public's been asking for now?
Absolutely. What we can't give you is the security cameras, the motion detectors, those type of things where we're going to really have to have someone who knows what they're doing come out.
And how much time are you going to need for that? The budget's adopted 30 June.
Yeah.
So it's something to be considered after the budget is adopted.
Right.
Just so the public knows that. Don't expect to see video cameras next year unless we take it out of reserve funds.
And again, it would be a case-by-case. Some parks, like Cerritos, could use cameras. And maybe in other parks like Brand, cameras may not be necessary with physical bodies there.
You can remove the basketball courts. Okay, there's some cost, but once they're gone, they're gone. You can put gates on, that doesn't cost much.
And the neighbors seem to think the person up front was working well with just the presence there, and the neighbors seem to think that the park is a lot safer. Now, we haven't gone in the summer yet. You know, that may be, we've got to wait and see what happens in the summer as well.
Okay.
All right, let me go to Councilmember Najarian, and then Councilmember Yusefian.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, before I can work on a solution, I need to know what the problem is. Last year, we knew what the problem was. There was a shooting. We took steps immediately to remedy that by putting a presence up, as well as other factors. Right now, from reading through these comments, I mean, I'm hearing things about, I'm reading runaway dogs, people not understanding the rules, people playing soccer inappropriately, people on the park at dusk, graffiti. So I need to hear what the issue is. I'm very hesitant to, for example, go out and install a video camera system to stop graffiti when all that's needed is a hood or a stocking, and these kids go right by the camera, see the graffiti, and they leave. That's an expensive use of resources towards something that might not solve our problem. So I would like to hear from the public. I would like to hear from the Rangers and yourself, either now or at some later time, as to what critically are these problems that we need to address, and then tailor our solutions towards solving those problems, whether it's manpower, technology, physical barriers, rules, signs, lights, whatever it may be. I think we can be a little more selective in how we go ahead.
Absolutely, and that's why we wanted to take a look at all the parks and just kind of do, look at each one individually and see what their needs are. A lot of, we've got problems with, we do have problems with graffiti. Vandalism is costing us quite a bit of money for our folks to come in and repair the vandalism at our parks. Graffiti has gone up. And violent crime hasn't gone up, but graffiti and vandalism have gone up in the parks. So that's one of the problems. At Carr Park, it's just a matter of the neighbors not wanting the wrong type, as they say, the wrong type of people using the park. Eliminating the basketball court eliminates kids hanging out there. And Brand Park at this point seems to be okay.
All right, let me go to Councilmember Yusefian.
Well, Mayor, after hearing all of these things, I would tell you, my direction would be, provide us the information, provide us the numbers that you already have. I'd rather, if you're telling me that you already have an issue with the financing, the budget, I'd rather spend the amount I have to do some of the physical improvements like gates and so on and so forth. Instead of going out there, hiring another consultant, pay another $100,000. He comes back to me, I says, "Okay, you need a $2 million camera system. Oh gee, you don't have the money to do it." I also lost another $100,000, which I could have used to maybe put some gates and do some of other stuff. So let me see what is it that you have. And then during the budget session, we could say, you know, we can get our arms around this, and let's do it in phases. Let's do phase one, we will do this. Phase two, we do the other one. And for phase three, maybe next year or a year after, you can go out there and look at the technology, because the technology changes every day. It doesn't stay the same. So I don't want to spend money for technology when I don't have the money to implement it.
Right.
And I agree with Mr. Najarian and Mr. Weaver. You know, you have to look at some of these things. He's right, I didn't even think about, somebody could put a mask on and just walk in there and do their thing and walk away. And, you know, I like to have a monitoring system, not you just take a picture and then you look at it after the issue has happened. The beauty of the technology is, the way it works in some other countries, is that they're monitoring that live. So when you see some people are being beaten up, you can call the police to show up over there and stop it. So we find out after somebody's been killed who the killer is. So, you know, that doesn't prevent it.
And Councilmember Yusefian, absolutely, we have the, again, we'll bring those figures in the next several weeks when we do the budget presentation, because there are budgetary issues. And costs for monitoring versus, you know, crime prevention versus investigation, they're two different costs. Again, we don't have the expertise. We'll work with the Police Department. Leaf Nicolason has been doing some work on that, and we can certainly get you some figures on that.
But some of the hardware stuff, I think it's important for us to know. I mean, you know what the gate costs?
We absolutely know that.
And we could do some of those things that are easy to do.
Yeah.
All right. What it sounds like we need here is a schedule. Mr. City Manager, if we could get that, knowing when we're going to get some information as to what the actual range of problems are?
We'll do that.
And the solutions, we can move on relatively quickly?
Yeah.
And also the list of things that are going to require more funding that we have to come back during the budget study to do. Is that about the size of it, gentlemen?
So that's the direction?
I guess that's the direction you're going to get tonight.
Are we going to listen to the public?
We are going to listen to the public. We have a few cards, but I would like to hear them. Thank you very much, Mr. Chaffin. Let me ask Tammy Rellye. I sure hope I pronounced that right, since you gave it to me phonetically as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Tammy Rellye, and I'm here on behalf of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. Before I get into my concerns, I just want to thank you all for the immediate response you showed right after the shooting last June. The neighbors have seen a huge improvement, and we've seen a lot of the park news systems being reduced. It just goes to show you that when all of you get together on the same page, that things can, you can make things happen in this city, and we thank you for that. But with that being said, I'm here today because on behalf of the residents, I am concerned about the lack of content in this proposal after 10 months. This is not what has been disseminated, the information that's being told to the public. If you just would bear with me for a second, I just want to give you a brief timeline. Since I'm representing the homeowners association, I have been in contact.
Your three minutes is your three minutes.
I've been in contact with the Parks and Rec, and I'll let you know how things have been going. Back in November of last year, several months after the shooting, I contacted Parks and Rec, said, "Hi, what's going on? You know, could you please give me an update?" I was told at that point that they are currently compiling information with a number of measures to improve Brand Park, and we will present options and costs to city council, and the council will make the ultimate decision. Great, sounded all well and good. So in January, didn't hear anything again? Thought I would just touch base and say, "Here we are again. Do you have any more information?" I got another response saying that they are putting together a report for proposed security improvements for seven parks, including Brand Park, and are looking to present this information to council, perhaps in a study session around February or early March. And they said, they're also thinking about having a study session, a public meeting, I'm sorry, and they said they would give us a date. So didn't hear anything for a while, and then I, all of a sudden, on February 7th, I got an email from the city staff saying, "By the way, on February 16th, seven days from now, we're having a public meeting. Surely not enough time for neighbors and concerned residents to show up. But nevertheless, our homeowners association jumped on board, sent out mailings, did whatever we could to facilitate this meeting so that we can have a good attendance." So then I asked them, "Why the short notice? What's the rush? You know, you've given the public seven days to make it to this meeting." In the email, "We're trying to expedite this meeting and receive input from our neighbors so that we can incorporate this input in a staff report to council by early March." And so, again, we wait, and the meeting gets postponed. And then I'm here, and then at that public meeting, mind you, we were told March 11th was when the issue was going to be brought to council. So I go the Friday before, look at the council agenda, it's not on there. No phone call. I have been in constant communication with the Department of Recs. I'm sorry, I'll make it very quickly. And no, you know, they said, "Well, I'm sorry, nobody got in contact with you." And I replied back, I said, "Listen, I've been in contact with you guys for several months, and you gave the public the announcement that March 11th would be the date. At the very least, you could have emailed those residents and attendants to say that it was postponed." In all fairness, they did apologize. So now we are here today. They told me April 29th, and lo and behold, it is actually presented to you, the proposal, I call it. And when I look at the proposal, and residents look at the proposal, this is not the information that we were told. In fact, there was a security consultant at the public meeting. So I'm all, we're very surprised that they're saying they have to check in with security consultants when there was one that was at the meeting on that Saturday. So then I emailed.
Mr. Rellye, we have to conclude.
Sure. I emailed that, I emailed them again and asked, "Why is the proposal so vague?" I was then dead silent, no email response from anybody. All I read is the information in the Glendale news press that it was a very complicated issue. So I guess you can see why residents and concerned citizens build up frustration, because sometimes city staff is not forthcoming with the information, and it's insulting. Many of us are professional individuals, and quite frankly, if we had this project for 10 months, we would have been.
I do have to move on.
I understand. We would have been, I would have been fired from my job.
Am, we do have to move on.
So I just wanted to kind of bring these issues to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see if we can make the communication a little tighter and also see if we can avoid more delay with this, if we can. Okay, Joanna Clark, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, City Council and City Staff. My name is Joanna Clark, and I live one-half block from Brand Park on El Miradero. I was here 10 months ago, and very much appreciated and actually benefited from the immediate response of the council for the security needs. In fact, I absolutely love the security guard, and I love that you closed the gate on Western Avenue. That made a huge difference in terms of traffic flow and speeding around the park. I'm here today hoping that we can initiate the same type of enthusiasm and commitment to action in completing and executing the long-term security measures. I also attended the public meeting in February, and it was my understanding that city staff would prepare a detailed report with a comprehensive cost analysis and probable solutions. It was an excellent meeting, there was a ton of feedback from the residents. It was a very symbiotic meeting, and we all were feeling so, so blessed that this was happening and all this communication was happening. We really thought that tangible examples with cost analysis next to them would be presented at this meeting today. Clearly, what was being presented today is really not what the public expected, and we really felt that the city staff should have been autonomous enough and experienced enough to prepare a detailed report so that you could really move ahead with it instead of wondering what motion you should be taking today. So I would just propose that start with something simple like gates, lighting, eliminate smoking, increasing either park rangers, which is a budget issue, or perhaps just talking about maybe the fire department taking some loops around a little bit more frequently. There are ways that we can get creative and start with that while there's maybe some other detailed issues regarding budget, because I recognize that. But even those two small things of stopping the gate and having just this one gentleman sitting on a plastic chair has made a difference. And I think if you add more elaborate gating, better lighting, eliminate smoking would be huge, plus a revenue builder because they could pass out tickets. So I just really think that you could start with some small things that are easy to implement in a budget that won't cost a lot. And I just really hope that we can move ahead with just improving our parks, because if we set a good standard at Brand Park, we can possibly use that as a way to set standards in other parks. And Brand Park really is, you know, the beautiful part of our city, and I'm very proud to be living next door to it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Herbert Milano, followed by Mike Mulhill.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I have a significant appreciation for someone wanting to maintain the integrity of Brand Park. I used to coach soccer, ASO, and that's one of the places where we played very frequently. But I want to applaud Mr. Najarian for asking precisely the same questions that I wanted to present before you. We really need to get a full scope of the problem with regard to how many incidences are there during the year? Or during what time of the day do they occur? Do they, what time of the week do they occur? Are these seasonal-type problems? Are they associated with a particular entity, specific gang or specific conflict between gangs or a problem having to do with drugs? The, if we take a blunt instrument and simply say, "Let's staff and put people and police," the cost is incredibly significant. The cost of that policeman will be $200,000 a year with pensions and everything else included. So I think that the last speaker basically brought it up. Have the brainstorming, get the data, put your arms around the problem fully, you know, and if there are some inexpensive temporary things that you can do, by all means, show them that there's some movement. But before you commit to a major increase in staffing, that it could be incredibly expensive and oftentimes not as productive. Mr. Najarian has it absolutely right. It's, let's put the scope right around the problem properly so that we know that you're being the most effective with the use of the scarce resources. And of course, Mr. Yusefian was right on as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mulhill.
Scary thinking, Mr.--
I think you startled him is what, what happened. Mr. Mul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I wasn't planning to talk about this subject matter, but kind of I hit home. The cost to maintain public buildings, a very serious problem because today we have a lot of graffiti. I think if the people at large got more involved with the actual construction and the maintenance of these buildings and had their children paint the walls, pick up the trash, no city employees, thank you, but the people who actually live in the neighborhood. I remember reading in the paper several years ago where a community wanted a, a community center and the city said, "We have no money." So people organized in the neighborhood and they built a little community center. Nickel dime fundraisers, kids got out there and painted, plumbers did the plumbing, painter did the painting, carpenters did the carpeting. At the end of the day, it was built, no money from the city, and for the next several years, as far as I know, there was never any graffiti. There was no broken equipment. The jungle gyms were the way they were when they first put them up, five, seven years later. People think that if the taxpayers pay for it, it's free. Just like the people who think of Rockhaven, the sanitarium, to be the new library. Where are those people going ahead, putting up a fundraiser to maintain that building? The city right now committed 8.5 million for the purchase of that equipment, another $500,000 to maintain it, and we're not through yet. And yet not one dime from the local people had contributed to the building of that facility. So when that place begins to have graffiti on the, on the walls and the trees have been graffiti on it too, people don't care about that building because why? It was the taxpayers who paid for it, not, not mom, not dad. Children did not get involved. You get those teenagers and make them volunteer to maintain that building at the new library or the new Brand Park. Get the people, get the government out of maintaining our public facilities. The day of public presence is gone because the cities don't have the money, nor the county, nor the state, or the federal government. We read about it every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulhill. Okay. That is the last card I have on, on this topic. So do I have any further input from my colleagues specifically on the direction we've given staff to this?
I'm just surprised that Ms. Relier stated that according to her view, the public was told something totally different than what came here tonight.
Well, I think Councilman Weaver, one of our staff people was a direct contact with, with the resident. And at some point, there may have been a miscommunication. One of our, our senior project managers was in contact with her and he may not have gotten back to her in appropriate time. We'll find out from her.
Yeah, because you're talking about Northwest homeowners. It's not just-
Well, you know, we did have a meeting out there. Approximately 50 to 60 people did show up to the meeting. Some couldn't make it.
Did you promise to come back with numbers and stuff to council in February or March?
Um, I think we promised to come back with a report to the City Council.
With costs?
But we do, again, I think the problem is this was going to be such a complicated report, we wanted to hold off on the costs until we came to the budget process. Some of our numbers for security, I didn't trust. And I didn't want to bring that to you without actually ask those solid figures with security. Quite frankly, because a couple of our folks from Public Safety weren't sure about the security person that we were using.
It just seems like the public's frustrated right now.
Yeah, and I understand that. Again, we do have most of the costs, but the security costs, and I have the spreadsheet here and I can give it to you, just don't look at the security costs because I'm not sure what that is.
Okay. We're not gonna, I mean, you can hand it out, but let's not get into the presentation now. We're not really prepared to do that. Now, Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Chapchan, the speaker talked about the fact that you had a security expert at the meeting. Do you know who that security expert was? Is it from our own department or was it-
We have a gentleman who's done work for some of our parks before.
Oh, we hired him?
Came in, who came in and did some volunteer work.
So we didn't pay him?
No. No. And I think, as I said, we're not sure the figures are correct at this point. We want to make sure they're correct.
The only observations, Mayor, I made as she was speaking, frustration on her behalf, this is what I got of it, and correct me if I'm wrong. What I got of it is your department has a lot on their plate. They have a lot of infrastructure improvements to do. This kind of went on a back burner. All of a sudden, there was a discussion or realization that this is falling behind. Run out there, have a little community meeting and just make some staff report, put together, because to be honest with you, I read the staff report several times and I still couldn't get it. It's only three pages, not that complicated. Unfortunately, it doesn't say anything, I think. So that's, that's why I asked the question.
Let me, let me just interject for a moment. We need to move this forward. Believe me, the message is clear. There's frustration on the part of the public. There was some kind of miscommunication or fill in the blank, but the bottom line is, as Mr. Yusefian says and as the, the, one of the, two of the speakers referred to, we just don't have enough information to act in the way they need us to at this point. So I have a, I know that-
In one sentence.
Mr. Najarian.
Just want to state that at no time in my role as mayor did I do anything to delay the presentation of this report or this issue to council.
All right.
Disclaimer, home mayor.
There's your legal disclaimer. All right. Unless there's anything else, can we, let's, let's move on and we expect that we'll be hearing-
Direction or motion?
It was direction. But we'll be hearing back about scheduling that is meaningful. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chapchan.
Good evening.
Okay, can we have the next item, please?
Next item is City Manager regarding Armenian Relief Society and Parks. At B1 is an ordinance for introduction, reducing or waiving fees associated with the rental of the civic auditorium for the Armenian Relief Society's annual festival, the cost of which is $17,682.
All right, let's go to the City Manager or who is-
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce it. This matter was placed on this agenda at the request of the council in response to a request by representatives of the Armenian Relief Society for, I'll call it a further discount in the charges to them for the use of civic auditorium. Let me turn to George Chapchan for a review of some background information before you take the matter up. George?
I think this is probably the seventh year that the Armenian Relief Society has used the civic auditorium. We've given them discounts every year that they've come to our department for a discount, albeit not a full discount. Most times it's between 10 and 15 percent. This year is a little bit more. We, you know, as you know, the civic auditorium is a enterprise account and giving any further discount on this really does impact the civic auditorium. In addition to that, we have about seven or eight other nonprofits that use the civic on an annual basis. My fear is that they will start coming to council for further discounts. The civic already is not in the black. I don't, I wouldn't want to see it, you know, further decline, but again, this is City Council's call and my understanding is it may need an ordinance, introduction of an ordinance to do this.
Okay.
Fiscally, again, we bring in about $80,000 from the nonprofits. This is our biggest nonprofit user since they use the entire weekend.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just some supplemental information is noted in the staff report. The staff does have latitude. The Parks and Recreation staff and the people who program the civic, they do have the latitude and it's very common, I'll call it, to sort of negotiate some of these rates. You'll see within here that the Armenian Relief Society would, under normal circumstances, have had a cost of a little over $20,000. The staff gave them some discounts on a number of different items to bring that bill down to 17,000 and change, about a $3,000 discount. Frankly, if the council are interested, the staff can push, you know, sharpen the pencil a little more and see areas where they could give some additional discount. But to date, it isn't uncommon for the staff to look at how they can possibly reduce or negotiate these charges within the authorization staff has without necessarily having to have an ordinance change. But certainly you were to adopt a policy, as we do for services, that would take an ordinance change, as pointed out.
All right. Let me go to Councilmember Yusefian.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, when I put this thing on the agenda, I was unaware of all the specific details that staff has provided. I would like to take the concept that Mr. Starbert was suggesting is to have the staff go back and sharpen their pencil and look at some of those things because I know you're collecting some deposits if they don't clean on time and this and that, which at one point, you're going to have to give it back to them anyway, but I think maybe you could look at some of those items. Furthermore, I think we need, as a council, we need to do a different, or a better job as, because we, since we adopted this ordinance earlier on, about a month ago or so, about the policy discounts and so on and so forth. I think we need to let the public know how they go about receiving certain percentages or so on and so forth. Now, the ordinance specifically calls if you want to be co-sponsored by the city, you will get about 25 percent off. There needs to be certain findings. There needs to be certain rules and regulations. There needs to be something in there. Instead of being told, gee, you go out there, write a letter to the city manager and the city manager has authority to do this. And that is not what they need to be told because that's what they were told. That's what they wrote in the letter and hence we're here. So the direction to the public needs to be a little bit clearer, what the policy is, what the direction is, what do we do. Now, I understand this is new. It's been around only for about a month or so. I think some kind of an implementation policy needs to be created.
Although, Mayor-
Excuse me, one, one moment. I'm getting a-
The, the policy that was adopted by the council does not apply to the civic auditorium.
Right.
It's an exempt facility.
It's an exempt facility.
Along with the Alex and the-
It's an enterprise fund like Shoal Canyon Ball Field up there.
So if it's co-sponsored by the city of Glendale, nobody gets anything?
No. No. Let's clarify.
Not the civic.
Mr. City Manager.
The, the policy relates to the city's support services and specifically doesn't apply to the civic auditorium, the Alex Theater, the Shoal Canyon Ball Fields, for example. So in the case of an event that is in one of our parks and requires some police coverage and other services in the parks, cleanup and, and rental of parks, there the policy applies. And there we may need to have a further procedure on how do you become co-sponsored, for example, as opposed to just endorse. But that policy only relates to those kinds of services, specifically doesn't apply to the civic auditorium and the kinds of charges that are embedded in the civic auditorium billing. Those are outside of the policy because frankly, as is pointed out, a good, a good amount of the business is from nonprofits at the civic. And they're either using it or they're competing with somebody from the private sector who might otherwise come in and use it. And what you'd probably find if there was the same policy applied to the civic, you'd find more groups who frankly would probably go ahead and use the civic who now frankly make do with the park or make do with other facilities because the civic does cost quite a bit more than, than just allowing somebody to use a park.
All right. Can we, do we have any other comments?
Well, I'd like to say, as I mentioned last week, this is a cultural, artistic, music event, which we're always trying to promote here in the city. So if it's going to take the staff sitting down and trying to work on a little more of the discount, then I'm all for it. I think that's, that's the right way to go.
Mr. Yusefian. I mean, Mr. Najarian, sir.
Thank you. I would, I would support the direction that Mr. Starbert suggested regarding staff sitting down and keep in, I guess as staff looks at this, keep in mind that out of the nonprofits that are using this, they, the ARS certainly is perhaps the, is the largest group in terms of the wide variety of services that, that they use from the city. So as, as we would, being an enterprise account, as, as any businessman would, give its, one of its best customers the best rate and best, most favorable type of pricing, I think that would be, that's certainly something I could see would be equitable.
And Councilman Najarian, I think we have, but we will go back and sharpen it and look at further discounts if we can. They do receive substantial discounts.
Let me go to Mr. Weaver.
I just want, this morning in the budget, we showed the revenue and expenditures on the enterprise funds. So I recall expenditures were way higher than the revenue side. Is that, as I recall from this morning?
Well, actually, all of the enterprise funds generate a profit. Now, in this case, the civic goes into the recreation fund.
Right.
I believe.
The enterprise--
So some components, for example, I don't know, I think, I suspect the civic probably loses a little bit of money, but overall, the recreation fund actually makes money as, as an enterprise fund.
Civic does lose money.
Other, other activities make up for the losses in the civic auditorium.
Right. Our, our sports complex, our, our leisure guide, the lifelong learning classes make up-
The civic--
Civic does lose money.
Okay. Let me ask you a couple of questions also. The, when you, you mentioned that they receive between, normally between 15 and 20 percent, this time a little more. What was that little more? In other words, what is the number?
I think they received about-
What is the percentage that we're talking about right now?
I think this time they received about 20, almost 22 percent. It's 21.8 percent.
Okay. And then my other question, my other question is, when you mentioned they're the biggest of that group, the biggest user of the facility or biggest customer, biggest in what way? Most number of days, most number of couple of days, but a lot more?
I think, yeah, the not, biggest nonprofit user that uses the, the facility for a whole weekend.
Just total dollar amount.
I think that's total cost, total fee. I think the next one closest to that is, is a $10,000 rental.
Um, well, let me, let me join my colleagues in expressing, I want to hear, we have a speaker also, but I want to just join my colleagues at this point in saying that I would rather see us do a couple of things. One is if we can pick up that, you know, 4.2 percent somewhere in there by looking at the list of fees and charges and see if we can tighten that up at all without this being an extremely detrimental issue to that, to the civic, let's try that. That would be my, however, I also want to say this. I agree with Mr. Yusefian. We, even though this is an exempt facility, we will end up right back here if we don't have some sort of procedure in place for other kinds of city assets where individual, in other words, part of that ordinance was that there, there will be a case-by-case kind of re-looksee at this. We don't have that in place yet. And I agree with him. It should be more than just writing a letter. Because even with this organization, you know, maybe they understood it, maybe they didn't, but in any case, there needs to be a, something where they can look at this and say, "Okay, here are the criteria. This is what we, we need." So I'd like to get that rolling as a separate issue. But, and beyond that, I don't want to set a precedent with this either. They do a wonderful job, but I don't want to set a precedent with this because on this list, let me borrow that for just a second. On this list that we have out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 groups and events that are listed here, they're one of only three that got, I mean, that means 11 groups were told, "No." I mean, that's what, just here's the column. "No, no, 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 no." So, you know, I don't want them to be negatively impacted if we can help them this year because of the time deadline. I don't want to see a repeat of this. That's just my personal issue. That's my personal view. Let's, let's go to the cards we have and then we'll, we'll pick up the comments at the end, okay? Let's go to Nancy Kent, followed by Mike Mulhill.
Nancy Kent--
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale, and as I speak, I feel like it's already decided what's going to happen tonight, but I will proceed. The Armenian Relief Society does lots of good charitable things for people in need. This request is for its annual festival celebrating the Armenian culture, with the net income going to help the needy. For this agenda item, I ask you to also keep in mind these groups. Number one, groups that consider using the Civic Auditorium, then decide not to when they find out how expensive it is, not for two full days, but just for a few hours. Number two, groups that ask the city for CDBG funds and did not get as much as they requested. And number three, people concerned about the possible cuts needed for the city to continue to have a balanced budget. Questions, if the city council gives this group an additional discount for its event this weekend, are you willing to give other nonprofits in Glendale the same discount for a Civic Auditorium event? Next, is the rental amount this year for this group significantly more than last year? And last question, the contract for this event was dated October 2007, and this group received a discount. I'm wondering why they waited from October until April 22nd, less than two weeks before the event, to publicly ask the city council for a larger discount? And of course, it's natural for them to ask, it doesn't hurt to ask, you people have the hard job of evaluating all the special requests to the city. I think that what you do for this group tonight, you should be willing to do for all other nonprofits in Glendale that request a discount for an event at the Civic Auditorium. And I'll end by saying that it's great that the city of Glendale sponsors an annual Unity Fest. That type of event is the most beneficial way to spend public funds to celebrate the cultures of the countries Glendale residents came from, because it brings people from different cultures together. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And Mike Mulhill.
I don't always agree with Nancy, but tonight I do. If we give the Armenian Relief Society a break, there are all the other charitable organizations that want the same break. We have to set a precedent. I don't think this organization is going to leave Glendale. They're not going to move to Beverly Hills, because I understand that half of Glendale's Armenian. So, they moved the organization to Beverly Hills or Chatsworth, no one's going to show up. So, as a businessman, we got them, okay? However, question, anybody from that society actually going to spend time and money, clean up the auditorium afterwards? Or is it a city that has to pay the maintenance of that? Have they offered to do any gardening service for the city? Do any plumbing service? Carpentry? Help stamp out graffiti? They always want something from the city, a government, but are they willing to put their, have their children go out there and wash the floors? You know, we hire a maintenance crew to clean the bathrooms, have their children clean the bathrooms. That will show you and the rest of the city that these people mean business. They like Glendale, they want to be part of Glendale, and they're going to put their, they're going to put their children to work at it too. And they'll be right with them cleaning the bathrooms and painting. Don't laugh. But you know, seriously, when people get involved personally, they think it's more important, because as long as it's a government-run organization, it's for free again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulhill. All right, that was last of my speaker cards on this. Yes, absolutely. Let me go back to comments from council. Mr. Najarian.
I just, I think Mr. Mulhill's under the, I don't think he understands the extent of this community, of this organization's involvement in the community. I don't think they do plumbing or carpentry, but I know for a fact that it's not just their children, but professionals, doctors and psychologists and psychiatrists and counselors do volunteer and help members of the community, not just Armenians, but all members of the community. They have numerous number of programs. So, along your lines, they're doing what you're suggesting, but not in those particular skills and professions and trades that you've mentioned. They definitely do the cleanup, and they are committed to the community, and I know that firsthand. So, along those lines, they're with you, but they're not with a hammer and a nail, but they're assisting the community on more professional and educational matters.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Usaytian, please.
Thank you. I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit. I understand what Mike is talking about. This is a little bit different organization to an extent, that earlier on, we gave a proclamation to the, our police department, guess what? They come to them and ask for contributions, and sometimes, they have contributed thousands of dollars to them. Several weeks ago, they contributed several thousands and more than 5,000, I would say, to the Bone Marrow Registry, and this is not one of their organizations. They do give a lot of money to different organizations that are Glendale-based. They're not part of their organization, so they make the fundraising and they give money for those good charitable organizations to do more work for the city, which is a lot cheaper for them to do it than for the city to provide that. One thing that I did see in the staff report, which the staff basically said, is that there were only 14 nonprofits that used the Civic, only 14. And out of 14, they generated only $81,000. The bigger question that needs to be asked in here, it's not that why they're asking for a discount. The bigger question is, why isn't the price designed in such fashion so more nonprofit could use it? The building is there, the air conditioning is working, the electricity's there, the water's there, you know? The workers sitting right in the front, they're there, they're getting a salary. They don't come in only when somebody's using the facility, they're there all the time, they're getting an annual salary. So, my question is, if this was a private business, what a private business would do? If they see people are not using their facilities because it's too expensive, guess what do they do? They lower the price. And this is one thing that maybe Mr. Chapchan needs to have a discussion with the Civic people to say, you know what, maybe if we lower the price for nonprofit, we get more nonprofits using it. So, the Civic doesn't sit there empty, not being used. And that's what I'm trying to get through, is if the Civic was being full all the time, and if they rented the place, it would keep, let's say, another profitable organization from renting it at full value, that's a whole different ballgame to me. But you drive in this town, you drive by Civic Auditorium, you drive tonight, is there an event there? No. How often there's an event there? Not many. According to this, only 14 nonprofits. And we know for well, in this city, there's at least over 200 nonprofits. And why aren't we getting those guys?
Okay. I'm going to go to Councilmember Najarian.
Briefly, I'm sorry, Mr. Draymond, and I don't mean to pick on Mr. Mulhill, but I made a big mistake. I, you're talking about cleaning up and doing other work. I know for a fact, I saw these two ladies last year at the Great American Graffiti Paintout. So, not just them, but many members of their organization. At the Relay for Life, I know they have a great presence. So, your point is well-taken, that I think we should look to all of our nonprofits that we extend courtesies to, discounts, to also give back to the city. It's a point well-taken. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Absolutely. I just also, I do want to add, the only, it's not that nonprofits are the only thing going on at the Civic. There may be 14 nonprofits, but there are also other events going there, going on there. I know it might not be tonight, on a Tuesday night, but on other nights, there are, as we all know. But in any case, rather than continue to, let me, let you respond, Mr. Chapchan, and then I would like to move this on to a vote.
Thank you, Mayor Draymond. There are other organizations, actually for-profits, that we charge more for, for the facility. And when it's not being used, it's not staffed, really. There's a bare-bones staff during the day, the sales staff, but it doesn't get staffed unless there's a full use of the facility. So, and also, the prices haven't been increased for five years now. So--
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, I'm sorry, I missed your hand there.
It's okay. Well, I priced out the Civic, the Tea House, all of these different locations. And I assume the way structure is set to help raise some money, offset the costs. I was there and cut the ribbon for the Armenian Relief Society, wanted a wish to be opened. And every year, I go to their annual event. So, I very much appreciate and support what they do. But I go back to what a number of others have said, if you're going to do it for Armenian Relief Society, what about the others? Now, if we have to have a policy that in essence says, take into consideration what they do for the community, how they participate in the community, who they give support to, all those things are important, so I'm hearing here, then that ought to be put into policy and a weighted scale put down. How many events do you do? Oh, graffiti paintout and the other, okay, you get 10 points. You just simply can't be subjective and pull out the air and says, this one does more, we've seen them do this and that, so we give them more. That's no policy. That's just, whichever one comes along and needs it, gets it. I know other nonprofits that would like to get discounts too there, but, and so, I can't support it until we have a policy on what we agree can be done. If you can shave costs, fine, but I would think the staff has already shaved virtually everything they can. Squeezing blood out of a turnip doesn't seem to be the way to go. But since the enterprises like the Tea House and the Civic stuff are not in the policy we set, maybe then we need a policy for all the enterprise zone uses too.
Okay. I have one last question, and that is, has anybody calculated what that extra 4.2% comes to dollar-wise?
I wasn't certain they were asking for another 4.2%.
No, but that's what was recommended, to bring them up to--
25.
To 25%. So, if they're at 21.8% right now-- Yes, sir.
Recognizing that my math might be faulty, but if, and George--
3.2%.
Here's, here's the little bit of math I did. If their, if their gross bill, including deposit, was $25,500, I think was the number, and their refundable deposit is $2,900, is that right? That meant they had a total bill without any discounts at all of $22,602, assuming they do what they should and they get their deposit back. That's just money that we're going to hold on their behalf. And if we then gave them discounts of $4,290--
It's 22, that's 21.8% I think.
That's roughly 19% of their bill. If we were to get them to 25% of that gross bill less the discount, we'd be looking to shave another $1,200 off of their bill.
I'm going to ask--
Mr. Weaver.
I think they charge $5 entrance--
I think so.
And they have about $10,000 coming.
That's what they stated.
So, if they raised it to $6, how much more money is that for $1 increase? Lot. It's about $10,000 is, what, $1,000? My math's faulty now.
All right. Let's--
So, I mean, they could raise it up, everything goes up in that, probably eating in a restaurant nowadays.
All right. Interestingly, I did not have a speaker card from anyone from the organization, but I would have liked to have asked a couple of questions had we had a speaker from the group.
And we can certainly look at any--
They're here, would any of them care to answer a question or two related to that? I would love to ask a couple of questions about this. I understand that your event is coming right up, so it's kind of, would be impossible for you at this point to raise your entry fee. However, one of the things I noticed is that you, according to what you have told the city, the event costs you around $80,000 to produce?
Advertising and--
And your net income is $5,000?
No, we never said $5,000.
That's what, that's what our paperwork indicated.
The staff reports is--
No, no, we never, no, we never said $5,000, that's wrong.
My report is wrong.
In $20,000.
I see.
But because the entrance, we put coupons in the, in the paper. So, most of the people cut the coupon--
Oh, I understand.
--and they come with that, and then we have a lot of invitations, so that's one of the places. Plus, everything costs, the food costs money, a lot of money to get the food over there. We have caterers who do--
My other question is this, you, you've been doing this seven years. There was a question asked by one of the speakers, the permit, I guess, was back in Why the delay in asking the question, I guess, is one of the, asking for a little more help--
We heard that there is a new ordinance that the city would give a discount for special nonprofits, something like that, and we thought we'll send a letter and see what happens.
Do you mind my asking, could you state your name for the record also?
Sonia Peltikin.
Thank you.
I'm the chair of the Armenian Relief Society, Western Region.
Ms. Peltikin, can I ask you also, do you understand what was explained here, both by the city attorney and--
I totally understand, and I, and I'm--
It doesn't apply to that facility.
No, I understand that. I also, with all fairness, if you have to give it to us, you have to give it to every nonprofit. I agree on that. The only reason, our organization has been in this country for 98 years, and we have done nothing but serving the communities we are in, and we are in every community. And be that social services, acculturation, or counseling, our members put thousands of hours a year just in volunteering, and just to serve the community. And we speak seven, eight languages in our offices. It's not that anyone can come.
Right.
It's not just for the Armenian community.
I guess the problem is simply the problem of how do we make this exception, and that's why I wanted to ask someone from the organization. Correctly, you've heard the comments, and let me also see if any of my colleagues have any questions before we vote briefly.
My question is, when did you start this process? How did you find out that you had to write a letter to the city manager?
Recently, a few weeks ago.
Did you go to Parks and Rec? Is that the direction you got from there?
No. I don't know where we got the direction, actually. They told us that there is a new ordinance, you know, if you write to the city or the parks, and we did.
And what was that?
And a letter to Mr. Starbert and Mr. Chapchan.
Okay. Promise this is my last question to you. You're no longer standing there, you're sitting here, and I'm standing there, what are you going to advise me? Help me vote.
You're putting me in a very difficult situation. I would, I would consider those organizations who really, I mean, there are a lot of nonprofits that they are not as active in the community as we are, and have never been, probably. But what our ladies have been doing for the last 98 years, I have not seen any, and I am very active with other community organizations, and these ladies are so dedicated, they work so hard, and went at the end of the all year, they've worked for this fundraising. But the money we're making here and there is, we're putting back into the city in advertising and the TV and the papers and the flyers, and so, it's not easy to put up a big show like that. We have two days of non-stop cultural event.
You know, you could, you could run for office because, I'm not sure that--
So, as I said, I agree that you have to do the same, you have to treat everybody equal, but maybe you should take into considerations those organizations who are really giving back to the community, and you should know, because for the last 25 years, we've been part of the CDBG program.
Right.
We get only $50,000, but we do $200,000, $300,000 of work, because our volunteers subsidize, you know, in those services. I go there-- you know, in those services. Our, I go there every day for seven, eight hours. Sometimes I don't get home till two, three o'clock in the morning. And I'm a volunteer.
So, based on our calculations, we're going at $1,200. Is, is your event going to be okay this year?
Probably, but it will never pay off our, let's say, psychological center, which is costing us over $120,000. We need-
But even if you had the 25%, which doesn't apply to that facility, but even if it did-
No.
Uh, it wouldn't, I mean, there wouldn't be-
It wouldn't make that much difference at this point.
I want to thank you very much.
But-
Especially for your candor.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Where are we, Mr. City Clerk? Do we have a motion on this?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I would move that we give the discretion to the Director of Parks to review the current charges to the ARS, and to extend them every reasonable additional discount in the pricing of their event, taking into consideration their, their overall contribution and use of the Civic Auditorium this weekend.
Oh, second it.
Second.
City Attorney, City Attorney.
City Attorney. I'm sorry, you can't second it.
I'm not intending to.
Okay.
More than likely than not, the Attorney General isn't, it gets involved in the game to perhaps put a damper on things. That motion is okay as direction, but I need to let you know that by municipal code, the authority to set the rates and fees reposes in the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. The Director of Parks and his staff uses their discretion in looking at these to grant some discount. What I don't want to do is, is have a motion that makes it appear that the council is, is usurping the authority of the commission to establish rates and charges, and also the discretion of staff. So, that's why I want to make sure that the motion is understood, really, to, to send it back to staff, to really, to use the terms that many of you used already this evening, to sharpen their pencils and try to get that discount down to a degree that makes sense within their, within the realm of what they do and what they review. That's why you have an ordinance before you.
Right. Can we, uh-
And Mr. Mayor, that's how I took the motion.
Right. And is that, is that the essence of your motion?
I didn't want to use such a colloquial a term as sharpening pencils, but I think that conveys my-
And I just want to point out that the city attorney, just a moment ago, referred to himself as the-
Attorney-
Attorney General, but, but that's all right. In any case, do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right.
And that's to look at, sharpening pencils.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Kosakian.
Councilmembers in general.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Before I can modify.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to put on the agenda at one point to look at these two facilities, and to consider what the mallhead was saying, and also what the speaker was saying. May not be a bad idea for us to look at some nonprofits, even Mr. Weaver was saying the same thing. There are some nonprofits that do a lot, and to have some type of a policy that says, you know, if you do all these things-
Yusefian. I'm not, I, I know exactly where you're going. I agree with you. Let's put it on the agenda rather than argue it tonight. I'll ask, uh-
Just one other, Mayor. Two facilities. You're talking about the Civic and the Tea House and Brand Park. Everything that's under your control, that would, I think we'd better look at.
We do, yeah. We've got the Tea House and some other facilities sometimes.
Let me put it this way, because of time, and we need to move on. And that is, let's, let's come back to this with a report on those city facilities and our policies there, and what we might be able to do. Let's get a fuller airing of it.
But let's do the security first.
Yes, but let's do the security first.
Thanks for your here.
Thank you.
You can go home now.
All right. Mr. Kosakian.
Next item?
Yes, please.
Next item is returning to oral communications unless there's new business that I'm unaware of. Okay.
There, there is, I believe, uh, there are-
No new business.
We took care of that earlier.
Okay, yes, sir. In that case, oral communications, premier policy, and we're following after the agenda items. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker is Dr. Richard Spiritu, followed by Tamara Mofsefian. Good evening.
Members of the city council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Spiritu.
Hi.
Um, I have some things that I will be giving to everybody tonight. This is the VC report on DVIs and DHP. Kosakian, can we get the lights down just a little bit? Uh, this, if you are not aware, this is the DVI that's provided by the MTA, Driver Vehicle Inspection Report. Goes through a bunch of different issues. This is a driver inspection report by MV Transportation. This is an interesting report because it has certain things, both on the MTA and MV Transportation, requiring the mechanics to sign off on the repair. This is a new form that was instituted by MV Transportation as of Monday of this week. A lot of these items, such as head signs, two-way radios, wheelchair lifts, heaters, and air conditioning, are issues that I've brought before the city council in the past regarding the buses. The bu, drivers are not to call these, any of these items in, but are supposed to turn in these reports at the end of the day. Regarding the air conditioning, we just had a recent heat wave. The 32 bus and the 65 bus was also out of commission because of excessive heat. This is an interesting report because this is a driver vehicle log. They're required to fill one of these out along with the DVI every day, showing the amount of time they've actually driven. It shows the area when they're below time and all this others, off, on breaks, lunch periods, when they're off duty, when they come back on duty. This is a requirement by the federal government. And this applies not only to bus drivers, but to long-term drivers, long-haul drivers. That's the end of my report there. The reason why it's the end of my report is because I just recently received a copy from the California Highway Patrol, guys with the badges, dated April 17th, 2008, regarding their inspections. Interesting things, there were a total of 18 defects of the buses. Two buses were pulled out of service, the number 29 bus and number 34 bus. Raised the issue about the 34 bus in the past. And interesting thing, as of this evening, those two buses are still out of service. They haven't repaired them. I don't know if the mechanics know what they're doing or what. The number 32 bus was pulled out of ser, the number 34 bus that was pulled out of service was because of defective brakes. Who cares about defective brakes? Only stops individuals. The number 29 bus was pulled out of service because of air loss to the brake system. Who cares if the air brakes don't work? There was another interesting thing on this report because some of these buses were not pulled out of service, but they have the identical codes. Some of these other buses have the identical codes. I'm not endorsing or promoting any bus company for the MV contract or the V-line contract, but according to the schedule on the RFP, and I guess I'm the last, one of the last speakers tonight, it says, "Proposed approval of the agreement to the city council by April of 2008." Think we're, we're closing in on that. I'm going to be giving also, Mr. Howard, a copy of how I got this DMV report, a copy from the California Highway Patrol receipt that I paid for the report at their desk. So, Mr. Kosakian, would you mind giving this to the members of the city council?
And let's have-
Along with two of these copies regarding the RFP.
Tamara Mofsefian, Mofsesian, excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Spiritu, followed by the tag team of Bruce Philpott and Cynthia Lloyd-Jones.
Sorry, I'm no good to speak English. Speak Armenian, please.
That's fine.
I speak next translation, maybe. One of the, where this, he came, I still shot and come there, yet for Mary Ella, I ever, Aranadiana, Hishumeck, in landlord, he had a conflict, he got back to him. Hard to remember, landlord, me, I would, Larry, gas city, inspection, city, boy, lot, inspection, neither. But he might not eat, is that the other well, if you have, yes, then what's it, she'm tell is, I need to, then what's it, she was true. And not eat, who's my God, he had version, yes, girl, city, eternal, in Namak, back, I miss, I watch, Martin, version, which, why, so eternal, is chip, I thought, yet, she's, my, I'm met, God, so, yes, hard to know, in, too. Why, eternal, no, good work, city, eternal. I question. He gets, I'm, I'm, I was, I said, uh, me, my landlord, one time, me, court, maybe, maybe, she, once, I assume, for, of, he, my bedroom, no, no bedroom, my bed, kitchen, she speak, no, kitchen, me, go, court. My landlord, he da, which, he, he, she, uh-
Sir.
Mr. Yusefian, we're not going to translate because we have a policy in place.
Dismiss, dismiss, no.
That's your question.
Court.
Another question.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may reject-
Second time.
I understand that the city has a policy of not translating, and I respect that. I think it was my translations or my inability, I guess, to do a proper job that may have prompted the policy to be adopted, or maybe not. But with your permission, I'd like to take the time that the next speaker will take, Mr. Philpott, which I know he'll use his full five minutes to possibly at least explain to the speaker the city policy and why we're not able to translate it. I don't want to see anything lost in translation. I feel the speaker's frustration. I feel incumbent upon me as a speaker of the native tongue to at least explain to her why we're unable to translate it.
I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
But we will, we'll have to do it off to the side.
Of course.
Sidebar while the next speaker is speaking. And I understand Mr. Yusefian has a question, but if you can hold it till the end of oral communications, then we'll tackle all of them.
He forced it in, car, over, Larry, by, only, he, baller, by, the, only, pastor, he forced it in, that, it, that.
Your translator?
Are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Butch?
You're going to have a sidebar at this point, or later, later time, Mr. Kosakian? Uh, Mr. Philpott, five minutes, followed by Cynthia Lloyd-Jones for five minutes.
This part is, it's gonna be, be a little too, this thirty-
What did you say this morning?
It's good.
Good evening. You're Nigerian, members of the city council.
That's quite all right.
I apologize for that.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Freud.
I am going to hand out.
This week, we'll conclude our presentation on policies that are causing excessive emergency response delays. The fire department recently changed this policy that allowed firefighters to jog remote and out of district locations that was proven to cause severe delays in response times. While that policy change will prevent delays that were often double the average, there are other elective activities that are causing a much larger number of delays. These preventable delays occur when engine and truck companies take themselves out of service, or drive out of their districts, or extended periods of time to conduct activities that can be accomplished through other means. These delays continue to be ignored because of tradition, and that they have been established practice for many years. They fall under the Glendale Fire Department's Risk Management Assessment Scheme as an acceptable practice. If the fire department applied the principle of geographic integrity, they would be forced to change these practices. We will show slides of the fire department's own activity logs and recent photographs that depict various kinds of activities by first responders that close their neighborhood fire stations and leave their fire districts altogether. Without geographic integrity, the opposite, or geographic isolation, becomes an acceptable practice. Due to time constraints, we will only be able to share a few activity logs that depict these examples. Cut the mic maybe a little bit, that would help for people here in the, in the room to see the slides.
Our clerk is translating, Mr. Philpott.
There we go. Oh, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, slide number one shows truck company 26 out of service at Broadway and Isabel, so that one or more firefighters can be given a physical exam as part of the city's Employee Health Service Program. And truck 29 engages in this activity, which they do all the time. All of North Glendale is left without protection. Truck companies carry the jaws of life and ventilate roofs on structured fires before the entry team can safely extinguish it. Slide number two and three show four-person engine companies being taken out of service for hours to perform simple clerical duties of copying activity logs. Slide number five depicts a Christmas family detail where the whole engine company was taken out of service. This kind of activity is permitted under the standard of risk management. It would not have been tolerated if the test of geographic integrity had been applied. Slide five depicts another Christmas family detail. This time, one firefighter is assigned to that detail, and leaving the entire engine company in its station, ready to respond. You will note that the remaining three first responders handled three emergency medical calls in their district during that time. Had the entire engine and company gone on that family Christmas detail, as was seen in the prior slide, all of those medical calls would have required another out-of-district company response, causing delays measured by minutes, not seconds. I skipped six, and I'm sorry, but six depicts the entire engine company closing down and driving out of district so that one firefighter could be fitted for turnouts at station 26. Slide number seven is a good illustration where the right decision was made to keep first responders in district. Here, one firefighter drives the station's passenger vehicle to fire- Here, one firefighter drives the station's passenger vehicle to fire station 24 to get turnouts, while the other three-member crew remains in their fire district, ready to respond to emergencies. Slide number eight depicts several noteworthy issues. The first is that the engine company was staffed with three for the entire shift. The second is that the fourth firefighter, who left that, left, but is an elected officer of the union, and he left the station to visit other stations on union business. He apparently never returned. It is important to note that this firefighter is the only certified paramedic on the crew, and his position on the engine company is critical in eighty-eight percent of the calls that are medical in nature. The third point is that the company closed its station down to drive to another station for another turnout fitting.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Cynthia Lloyd-Jones, followed by Mike Mulhill.
To Mr. Mayor and Council. Slide nine. Slide nine shows an engine company closing its station for several hours so that the firefighters can drive to fire headquarters and select their preferred city-paid medical insurance policy called Open Enrollment. Because all Glendale fire companies close their stations to engage in this activity, fire districts are needlessly unprotected for over a hundred hours each year. Slide 10. This depicts an out-of-district response that occurs all too frequently. On Wednesday, February 27, 2008, fire captain and union president Chris Starros took his entire engine company out of its fire district, 27, and drove to City Hall, which is in fire district 26, so that he could address the Civil Service Commission. While in the City Council chambers, a medical emergency was taking place in Captain Starros' fire district. Because engine 26 was out of district, truck 26 was dispatched along with rescue ambulance Slide 11 is the dispatch log of the incident mentioned in slide 10. It shows that when Starros finally got on the radio, he quickly canceled the truck company, notifying the dispatcher that he, Starros, was closer to the call. This was proven not to be true. It took the rescue ambulance that rolled from station 26 three minutes and nineteen seconds to arrive on the call. Had truck 26 not been canceled, it would have arrived at the same time as a rescue ambulance, because it would have rolled in tandem with the ambulance. It took engine 26 an additional full, two full extra minutes because it was responding from City Hall, which is out of its district. You will note that the dispatch log shows the incident is a heart attack. When Chief Howard was presenting his material on justifying staffing with four on engine companies, he said it's critical on heart attack calls to have up to five firefighters attending to the victim. Here, the victim had to wait an additional two minutes before more than two firefighters were on the scene. Truck 26 does not have a firefighter paramedic on its crew, but engine 26 does. This can be critical in some medical response cases like heart attack. Slide 12 shows how creative scheduling can ensure geographic integrity while allowing firefighters to attend appointments. This daily activity log shows where three of the four firefighters were able, at different times, to make appointments that required their presence. This allowed the engine company to remain in quarters. Thirteen through fifteen shows photos that were taken recently and depict engine 26 and rescue ambulance 26 taking a coffee break in Kenneth Village, which is located in fire district 27. Engine 26 is out of its neighborhood fire district, and RA 26 is at the extreme west end of the district. In either case, minutes will be added to emergency calls when they are in this preventable status, and in some cases, minutes can have a huge impact on medical victims. As was found in the flawed jogging policy, remedies to these practices also exist. You can see by the slides that engine and truck companies leave their fire districts so that one or two of the four-member crew can attend a scheduled appointment. These types of activities occur every shift. Rather than take the entire company out of its district or out of service in violation of geographic integrity, firefighters with appointments can drive the city-owned vehicle that is assigned to each fire station, keeping their personal appointments one at a time. By a slight policy change, emergency responders will be in their fire stations more often than under the current policy, which permits and condones geographic isolation. This will save lives and further reduce the number of failed incidents in South Glendale. This will also allow the $800,000 engines in trucks to remain at rest, therefore, sorry, thereby saving on fuel and prolonging their useful life. This will conclude our weekly presentations at oral communications. We will be addressing the new models that have more, have important fiscal consequences during a special study session on the budget that is set for May 27, 2008. I would like to thank the mayor and council for allowing Mr. Philpott to address these issues in a single presentation. Thank you, Mayor. Council.
Mike Mulhill, followed by Rita Unikian.
Evening again, gentlemen, Mayor, City Councilmen. First want to say that I spoke with my wife, and she told me that I have to speak more humble before the council. I have to back off and be more humble. The main reason I came here this evening is I read an article in the Glendale's news press, and I felt very honored to be a part of a group of people written by a man by the name of Ray Trim. City Council meeting regulars have it, in which he states that the regulars who come here, which would be Mr. Molino, Mr. Allen, Nancy, lady in the white hat, and they included me. Wow! I've only been here maybe six times. I guess I must be like EF Hutton, that organization, you know?
EH Hutton.
EH, when, when, when they spoke, everybody listened. I have to stand back and be more humble.
EH, yes.
So I feel honored that I carry a big voice, I guess. Thank you. I want to congratulate the mayor for, saw his name in the paper, Mr. Drayman. Congratulations for becoming the new mayor, okay? And you're going to speed along the movement. I know she watched the clock tonight, only nine o'clock, not 10:30. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The thing that concerns me tonight was the Thursday, April 10, article in the Glendale News Press, which states, "Council Puts Cash Aside for Property. Officials Say It May Take a While Before Rock Haven Site Is Ready For the Public." The 3.3-acre Rock Haven Sanitarium was purchased for $8.5 million, and another $500,000 was for maintenance. That's $9 million. What bothers me is I never knew that the council had decided to vote on this. It was like, how did this happen? So I didn't read in the paper until it was already a done deal. I asked Mr. Barry Allen, who's not here right now, and he said to me that the council got together behind closed doors and discussed it, and by unanimous vote, you all voted for it. That's what I was told, okay? There's a selection, okay? The other thing that bothers me is, on a show of hands, how many members of council live north of the 134 freeway? Mr. Quintero? May I ask you where you live? You live north of the 134?
He had his hand up.
Mr. Weaver?
He had his hand up, sir.
Okay. Nobody here lives south of the 134 freeway. That means that the district south of, south Glendale gets no representation here. And by what happened with the Rock Haven situation, I'm sure if somebody lived and represented the south side of Glendale, there would not have been a unanimous vote for this project. We now vote right now at large for our council people. Many times, they've talked about having districts. Perhaps it's time to have nine districts, seven or nine. Therefore, what that would do is make sure that every, every area of the city is representative, not just the middle and upper-middle-class areas of Glendale. In a democracy, that's called not being fair. Now, by having several districts, that means to campaign for an office, one costs $100,000. Maybe only $10,000 or $20,000 so that the little man can sit up here and be a member of council. I just happened to read today's, got a flyer this evening, "Campaign Contribution Limits, City of Glendale Forum. League of Women Voters." Man, I wish I could attend tomorrow. But I think Glendale has become, is the third-largest city in the county. We now have the Americana, and I'm very proud to be one of the supporters of it from the very beginning. And I think it's time that the city government has to change to a district situation rather than, rather than at large. Thank you very much. I hope I was more humble this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mulhill. Rita Unikian, followed by Anahid Pinedjian.
Hi. My name is Rita Unikian. I have lived in Glendale since 1989. First of all, I am a single parent, and I have volunteered at the Glendale School for 12 years. The reason of my conquer, the conquer is to ask the city councilor members to please consider looking into rent control, especially for all low-income residents in Glendale who are struggling to make a living. I have a handout that I intend to distribute to Glendale residents to sign and support my cause. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anahid Pinedjian, please, followed by Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Evening, Honorable Mayor, the members of the City Council and staff. I would like to congratulate new elected mayor, Mr. Drayman.
You have to speak up. I wish. Speak up.
I wish all success in highly responsible services to our community. And I would like to congratulate to council member Weaver for being a granddad for his first newborn grandchild. And also, I would like to thank each of you for being participated in annual commemorative event that took place last week, April 24, at Alex Theater, sharing with us the Armenian genocide as Remembrance Day. It was a great event that's sponsored by the City of Glendale. Now my problem. Thank you in advance for taking time to consider my problem. Once again, I would like to bring to your attention that my landlord is still harassing us. Last Saturday, in April 26, the cooling system in our unit did not function at all. For that reason, I called my landlord. Her daughter picked up the phone and explained the situation, the condition, excuse me. She answered me, "I will let my mom to know about it. Don't call." I was waiting with hope that I will get some response. Until today, there is no any response. In the last four days, the weather was very hot, over 90 degrees, and we left without cooling facility. I'm here today to complain for her attitude toward us as a tenant, as I mentioned it before to city meetings. We are human beings, and you can imagine our situation. She retaliated against us and still treats us the same way. Why we have lawfully exercised our legal right, so she is punishing us, saying always, "Move out." Why she repeatedly saying the same thing? So the tenant does not have any right? I'm asking your help to protect our rights. Her attitude is really against the law. Thank you again. Sorry, I don't want to go with detail, but whatever is, I can tolerate her attitude, ignoring persons.
We spend a great deal of time on these issues, Mr. Mayor. Both the city attorney's office and John Tuck-Ty with my office on those matters that we can become involved in, and we can't in every matter.
Thank you. Oh, there is no any help or response for this matter, because if facilities.
Let Miss Pupkin give her a call. Get some facts. I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you. The city attorney has indicated he will have someone call you, Ms. Pinedjian. Okay. Mr. Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman, members of the City Council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I just want to briefly tell this lady that generally from the CDBG funds, there is a attorney services provided oftentimes free of charge to tenants who have similar problems with very unsavory landlords that they may have. So as a landlord, I know that's a problem, that not everyone knows how to treat people properly, and it does exist. But there is legal help available for free for many individuals, depending on their income. And they're located here in Glendale. I want to first mention that, or repeat, I should say, that there will be a meeting by the League of Women Voters with regard to the issue of campaign contribution limits tomorrow at 7:00 PM at fire station 21, which is located behind the Galleria parking area. It's very easy to find. It's tomorrow at 7:00 PM. This is an issue that I have been talking about on and off for the better part of three years, maybe, four. And I'm glad to see that finally we're beginning to get some traction on this, because what I find very troubling is that I would talk to people running for office or council, and they tell me personally that they are in favor of it. Mr. Quintero told me that he was in favor, at least at that time, $500 limit. Mr. Yusefian mentioned it to me, and you, Mr. Drayman, as well. You know that I've been an advocate for this issue for a long time. And the way that I figure it is, we already have a majority, already in favor of it. But something happens after you get elected. The issues that you say you agree with us, or that we advocate, all of a sudden disappear. And that's the frustration. If the councilman that we put our efforts to elect basically carry our objectives and our desires forward, I don't have to be here. You know, I could be home watching, you know, Frontline or some other good show. But unfortunately, it doesn't happen. You know, we get lost in the, in the effervescent deals that take place when, you know, the developers take your attention and your time, and the issues that we face basically are ignored. So we wind up coming here, week after week, to remind you that these issues are important to us. So it troubles me sometimes, though, when I do get a letter or read something in the paper, like this gentleman by the name of Ray Trim, if I can call him a gentleman, a demeaning, derogatory, and vicious letter. Now normally, I wouldn't give this guy a second thought, because, you know, there's a wide range of personalities out there, and marginal personalities of that. But the words this man uses are insulting prattles, sniping at decent people, rhetoric hots, and blowhards. I mean, this is insulting. Normally, I wouldn't bother with this, except that I started getting calls at my home, telling me that this gentleman, Ray Trim, worked for you, Mr. Drayman, and, or there was a volunteer in your campaign. And I figured, my God, what, how should I feel after promoting, you know, for your election, and putting effort, and writing about you, and speaking to you before council, and encourage you to run, and then finding out that the person with such a vicious letter basically attacking for a one-sentence statement that I made about oral communications, which was adapting the words of Benjamin Franklin to the issue of changing the time. And so I'm really concerned, because the way that I feel, I mean, with the Marine Corps, we have this issue of, the concept of semper fidelis, you know? You have this loyalty, the same type of fraternity that you find in the fire department, where you feel you're part of a team, you know, working cohesively towards very lofty goals. And so, you know, I have kind of respect for that, but when I find that someone who's worked actively in your campaign answers in such a vicious way towards me, so I, when it is your time, Mr. Drayman, I hope that you have the courtesy of letting us know, what is your relationship with this man? And if you had, and if you had, and if you had any, and if you had anything to do with this particular letter. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Next speaker is Margaret Hammond. Next speaker is Margaret Hammond. Five minutes.
You'll have to tell us the story on that one later. Oh, my.
Mr. Maryman. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. I am here to address a situation regarding a sign ordinance that I remember many years ago caused terrific bruja here in the city, that we made a law against having signs on buildings, on the front of buildings and on the top of buildings. And last year, or was it the year before, Mr. Yusefian waged a war against the signboards on San Fernando Road and on, I don't mean a personal war, I mean you did it for the good of the city, which I totally backed you on that one.
You mean the billboards?
Pardon?
You mean the billboards?
The billboards. Well, what did I call them, signboards?
Signboards.
Well, they're signboards to me, where I come from. Anyway, and now, all of a sudden, here I am getting calls. I was away out of town, and when I come back, my phone is ringing off the hook about the signboards or the signs or whatever you call them on top of Americana. I was floored by the size, the ugliness, the complete, I don't know what you want to call it, lack of class of that neon sign. And then on top of that, there's some kind of a huge spire that from Adams Hill blows all night, goes off and on, does all kinds of things. So everybody is calling me, and I am saying, at this point, you know, hey, I got other things in my life that I need to take care of, and, but I have to agree with them. I say this, we passed the law, we made all the people on Brand Boulevard take down their signs, they even threatened Sealy Sign, and they only were allowed to keep it because it was historic. I mean, there was talk about Forest Lawn's cross because it was a neon sign. I remember that because I was part of that battle. And now here we are, this city that we're supposed to be so proud of, and it's such a wonderful thing, I tell you, I have to admit, I was pretty upset when I saw that spire thing. Whatever it's supposed to be and however it is being allowed, I'd like to know. And if we need to get people together and fight this thing, and I'm sure there'll be a heck of a lot of people off Adams Hill, they'll be screaming bloody murder over that spire and that sign going all the time. So I'm telling you right now, I'd like to have an answer how this is being allowed. The other thing is, what about San Fernando Road? When are we going to get that? Fence taken down or put some bushes in or, please, there has to be a way. I just, I mean, I came back from a trip, and a city that actually has very little summer. I mean, you know, 22 below zero and eight, nine months of the year, but nevertheless, they make sure that what areas they have are green and are kept green. They just wouldn't put up with that kind of, that's part of the entrance of our city. People go up and down San Fernando Road, from Burbank, from Los Angeles, and it looks like, I'm not going to say the word, I'll be a lady tonight, and I just say, I think we really need to have something done. We really do. Please. Thank you very much.
In reverse order, Margaret, just because you were the last speaker, let me, I'm not sure if you were aware that we had talked about the issue with the light in Americana. Let me ask the city manager, yeah, let me ask the city manager to recap where we are with that. We've had a number of contacts related to that, particularly from Adams Hill area.
Mr. Mayor, the calls we received originally were during a period of time that Caruso's technicians were testing the sign. We asked Mr. Lemo to give us a better description of how the sign is actually going to be, I call it sign, the spire, how the spire is actually going to be programmed. We haven't gotten that yet. I will tell you, last night, as I viewed it, it is considerably lessened in its brightness, much more moderated in the way the LEDs on the spire are used. I don't know if that's the way it's going to be programmed, but we're still expecting to get a description of how it's going to be programmed and utilized on-site. And my sense is, it's going to be considerably less than that first week when it was being tested, when it seemed to be the red, white, and blue rather garish colors. This was much, much more subdued than I witnessed last night. But we are expecting to get a program description from Mr. Lemo and Mr. Caruso.
I assume we'll see it on May the 1st.
I imagine we will.
And the fireworks, Margaret.
I wasn't asked.
All right.
Are you surprised?
Let me go to, Mr. Yusefian, I think, had his hand up first, and then Mr. Quintero.
Thank you. I'll go from, start from Margaret, then work my way down, since you were right. Question. San Fernando, I drive it every day because I have to go to Home Depot to pick up stuff. So, a couple days ago, I noticed last week, they had a crew there that had pulled the poles out, they were out there with jackhammers, and they were breaking all the concrete off the poles to basically reuse the poles. So I'm assuming that as soon as they're done, they will go out there. I saw seen new markings, which is further back, so I'm assuming as soon as they get the poles done, they're going to go back there. I also bug Mr. Zern every time I see him, what's going on, and the last time I talked to him, part of the answer was that MetroLink is telling our workers that they need to be trained how to work in a train right-of-way. I think their training to me is like five seconds. You see a train, don't step in front of it, or stay away from it. But nevertheless, that's what they're doing.
You got a job?
Yeah, I will take that job. It's paid $100,000, I'll go there. No problem. So that's one thing. So I think San Fernando's moving. It's a safe space, but I would say at least I keep track of it, because I see it all the time, I want it done. Sign on Americana, while all the signs, animated signs are illegal by law, part of our DDA basically spells out that sign, it's allowed, and it was part of the agreement the council voted on 5-0 to allow that sign to go there. And we knew that, so I think Mr. Drayman was the only one who was not here, he did not know about it, but I think Mr. Najarian also was not here when we voted on the DDA. I think we were here, five of us voted on that particular item. When the zone changes and all the variances and everything else, that was all voted for. At least I knew that there was going to be a sign there, I knew it was going to be animated. So that's questions to your, at least two there. Mr. Mulhill raised an issue as far as who lives north of 134 and who lives south of 134. I will tell you, I have lived all over Glendale, north, south, far north, far south, and I will tell you, currently, my parents live in South Glendale, not too far from Adams Square, and I will tell you, I won't do anything to jeopardize my parents' location. Even my parents didn't live there, I still wouldn't do that. To me, Glendale is all the same, I treat them equally. Mr. Milano, as far as campaign contributions. As I have stated in Larry Zarian's show, I will state it again. I made it very clear, I will not take any, any contributions from any city unions. Just to let you know, last time I received $22,000. That's $22,000 I'm going to flatly turn down. No disrespect to those unions, but I have voluntarily decided not to do that. And I think the campaign issue is coming back, and it'll be there. Unfortunately, I will not be there tomorrow, because I have made a commitment to go to the Relay for Life, which ironically is happening both at the same time. So I will be at Relay for Life, but I do intend to vote for campaign reform, so that's what I will do. That's pretty much all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
Nothing.
Mr. Najarian?
I want to go home. Just briefly to Mr. Mulhill, if he's still here. He's not. Even though I may live north of the 134, I spend many more hours at my office, which is located south of the 134, and it certainly gives me great exposure to the issues related to those neighborhoods south of the 134. So I'm not just a northerner, the Great North, how do you put it? The Far North. I'm from, I'm a downtown, downtown guy much of the time. And Margaret, that spire certainly is visible, but do you get any complaints about the Alex Theater spire? Were that not a historic monument? I think that's oftentimes more garish than the lighting that I see on that Eiffel Tower. I thought, being from Canada, you might have an affinity to a replica of a French monument, but good to have you back anyway, Margaret, and you missed the Irish famine discussion in our week of remembrance. We had Professor Dennis Doyle, he played the Irish harp, spoke some Gaelic, gave us a nice history of the Irish people and their immigration to the United States.
And said, "Didn't hear about..."
And actually saying at the end of his presentation is very impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Quintero has already told me he's not going to speak. I do want to address a couple things. One is council manic districts, Mr. Mulhill brought up. I do agree with him on that for those reasons that he mentioned, plus a whole host of others. However, where I don't agree with him is the assumption that, you know, because people live in a geographic area, they're incapable of understanding issues throughout the city. Like Mr. Yusefian, I've lived in every part of the city, and actually, the majority of my adult life was spent living in South Glendale, not North Glendale. My vote would have been the same. I'm sure that he has misquoted Mr. Allen, because Mr. Allen knows how the city functions. The votes did not take place behind closed doors. However, real estate negotiations were conducted behind closed doors in closed session and reported out appropriately, and the subject matter of those meetings was also made public as they always are. Whole host of things related to Mr. Mulhill's comments. You know, people that live in North Glendale wear shoes, you know, so therefore, all people who wear shoes are incapable of understanding issues from south of the Picket Wire, you know. I have to laugh at a particular group of people that come here that divide this city up into north and south and east and west. I'd like to ask staff right now, and I'm absolutely serious, so get out your pencils, I'd like staff to do an evaluation for me using Central Avenue as the marker of the city, a north-south line of demarcation. I want to know how much park space is in east Glendale versus west Glendale, how many council members live in east Glendale versus west Glendale, and I want to see some kind of matrix showing me something related to their voting record. It's utter nonsense. You want to complain about an individual council member's voting record?
You were taking notes.
That's right. City manager is just catching on to my sense of humor, and that wasn't really a serious request, but a rhetorical one. The bottom line is, you can draw a line anywhere in the city and say, "See?", or you can divide it into quadrants or sixteenths and say, "See, in this sixteenth, there's only such-and-such percentage of councilmen that live there," et cetera, et cetera.
Just break in, I'm the only one that lives in west Glendale.
There you go.
Put it that way.
See? See? So, in any case, I guess that makes you gentlemen, with the exception of council member Najarian, far better representatives than I, because I live in the far north part of the city where Rockhaven is located. You all don't, but you voted for it anyway. You're better representatives.
Or Easterner.
There you go. I don't know what it means when I voted for the Adams Square many part to be redone. I don't live down there any longer, but heck, you know. So anyway, it's sort of this arbitrary dividing up the city, this way when it suits one argument, that way when it suits another argument, you know, so on. Now, Mr. Milano, I will only get, and the reason I laugh so hard is because, you know, when the pot's calling the kettle black, it's just really, really humorous to me. And I want to say this, I have a whole particular animosity toward you, but let me just point out some of the things that I can recall off the top of my head, the vile and contemptible things that you have written and said. I wish I had penned that letter you're referring to, because it absolutely speaks for me and hundreds, if not thousands, of people who contacted me about it. I've heard you say, I've heard you refer to former mayor and council member Rafi Minukian as a liar numerous times in this chamber, including in public forums when you were running against him for council. I've heard you refer to former president of the school board Greg Krikorian as both a liar and an empty suit in public forums.
Just for the record that has never happened.
Excuse me? No, 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 no. No, no, no. Pardon me, pardon me. I have the floor at the moment. I have the floor at the moment. In public forums, including when you were running against him for city council, I've heard you refer to actions taken by this council as bigoted. I've heard you refer to council members and city staff as crooks. You have referred to me in public settings, that I have been present, both here in council during open session and not, as an empty suit. And you also wrote to the Glendale news press and included in a letter referring to my deceased father as a good man who would be utterly disappointed in me. I think that those actions, Mr. Milano, are not just mean-spirited, I think they're vile, and I think a lot of your actions are vile, and I hope there are people at the newspaper watching. Local papers, please copy. Thank you. I have no other comments. I don't know if my colleagues have any further comments.
I think you said it all.
You called me a few bad names, too.
Well, me too, so.
You know, the bottom line is, there is no, there is no market cornered on ill will and vile behavior, Mr. Milano.
Would you like a motion to...
I would.
So moved.
Thank you.